A baby is born. Cute. He's already surrounded by technology. By age four, she knows how to use a smartphone. He's reading. No, not from this. This. She's making a digital presentation. You don't even know what that is. He has an interest. No, not that. That. By middle school, she has built her own website and her first app. In high school?
With my Michael-Sanitiferometer, I can measure down to the fraction of the wavelength of light.
The world is changing. And they are preparing for jobs that don't even exist yet.
All right, well, good evening again, everybody, and I want to thank you for waiting. I apologize for starting late tonight. We have a meeting immediately before this meeting called pre-agenda, and sometimes we get into some pretty weighty discussions in there, and those discussions and some issues we had to deal with ran a little bit longer than we thought they would, so we do regret not starting on time here. We tried to as best we can. We are going to start tonight with a very special recognition. Tonight, we've invited Okoye Middle School Principal Mark Shamoff and his leadership team as our recognition guest. Okoye Middle School, under Principal Shamoff's leadership, has once again earned the Apple Distinguished School designation for 2013-2015. This designation means Apple recognizes Okoye Middle School nationwide as having an exemplary technological learning environment, being a center of innovation, and displaying exemplary leadership. Dr. Shamoff, will you and your leadership team please stand, and so we can recognize all of your leadership team that's with us tonight? And now, Dr. Shamoff, if you could come to the podium and lead us in our pledge and moment of silence, and I have to say before you start that that my wife is a proud alumni of Okoye Middle School, so you hold a special place in my heart.
Thank you. Please stand and bow your heads for a moment of silence. Please remain standing for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated.
You know, I have to share with you all, you're a funny crowd. I haven't gotten a "oooh" like that since I told people I had a new baby, which has been years. I'm going to ask to join Dr. Shamoff at the podium Mr. Gary Bros from the Apple Company, who is a K-12 strategic accounts manager for Apple and somebody well-known to this district, and I'm going to invite Mr. Bros to speak a bit more about what the title means for Okoye Middle School to be an Apple Distinguished School, and then he has a special presentation. Mr. Bros, welcome.
Thank you, Chairman Sablet, Board members, and Superintendent Jenkins for giving us the opportunity to recognize Okoye Middle School tonight. Chairman Sablet, you talked on about three of the five best practices already. You hit on them that we look for in an Apple Distinguished School, but first, let me talk about why this is so unique in your district to have one, especially a repeat offender like Okoye have been recognized so many times. I think they probably, within Apple, hold the world record for the most consecutive recognitions as an Apple Distinguished School. And it is truly unique, because the way the process works is each year, account executives and my colleagues and teammates like me, we're in schools, in districts across this country every day, and we're constantly looking, you know, for those schools that really you walk in and you can, you sense it the minute you walk in the door, you walk in the classroom, right? You've all been there. Wow, these guys get it. So, we nominate them kind of quietly behind the scenes to a leadership team at our headquarters in Cupertino. Those nominations are kind of winnowed down, and then from that group that's left, those schools are invited to competitively apply for education recognition program. We call it ERP. Then those applications are narrowed down again to the final list of winners. So, for this past year, kind of uniquely, there were less, and to put this in perspective, there are fewer than 200 Apple Distinguished Schools and Apple Distinguished Programs spread across both K-12 and High Ed. Now, they don't share the real numbers with me, but if you just do a straight-line average, you know, there are about probably 25% of that 200, so probably fewer than 50 would be my guess, that are recognized as Apple Distinguished Schools in the country this year. So, very, very rare accomplishment. And what we look for when we're looking in those schools, because I talked a little bit about, you know, you'd hit on three of the probably five best practices, we look for visionary leadership, and certainly, all these schools kind of share that characteristics. And we've been fortunate to have back-to-back strong leaders at Okoye Middle School between Sharon Gabriel and now Dr. Shamoff, just, you know, continuing to lead this effort of innovation. The second thing we look for is innovative learning and teaching. So, what's really going on in the classroom with the kids, the engagement, the achievement, you know, the performance, the stuff that makes you go "wow" when you walk in. We look for ongoing professional learning, and certainly, they do that. They, in fact, some of the models that they've developed, we talked to a lot of other districts about, come find out how to build professional development within your own ranks, within your own school, using your own funding and not having to spend a fortune or a bunch of time getting your staff up to speed to lead these kids who are ready, right? The other thing we look for is compelling evidence of success, which they certainly have. Their student achievement shows that they're a very successful school. And then, finally, the last thing we look for is, hold on. I know there's five. Humor counts a lot. Flexible learning environment, in fact, that's how they self-describe theirs. They have a mix of different devices, because it's really not about the technology per se, but certainly, they use the right device for the right task at the right time. So, they do have probably too many Windows machines out there, and I'd ask you all to help me with that, but they also have iPods and iPads and MacBook Airs, and, you know, so they have a good mix of different technologies that they're able to use to engage the kids. So, that's kind of an overview of what we look for when we're looking for an Apple Distinguished School or an Apple Distinguished Program. In recognition of that, we also have a very special plaque that we've prepared and we'll come up and present. In fact, if you would humor me, it's kind of light, why don't I start it around, and then we'll meet it on the other end, and we also have a great banner that we'd like to present. So, I guess if we have, can you come down? Before I leave the mic, thanks for giving it to me. Dr. Shamoff, just wish you and your staff continued success. You're really a beacon. You host districts and schools, not, I don't know if everybody knows this, but the FETC, the Florida Education Technology Conference, is probably one of the largest and most well-attended conferences in the country. Every year, they do a site visit where they host visitors, not only from around the southeast of Florida and Georgia, but around the country, and even people internationally. So, they really are truly a beacon, and Chairman Sablet mentioned that about being a center of excellence, and so they're just a great example for other schools and districts from around the country and around the international crowd. So, thank you for doing that, and best wishes for continued success.
Well, Mr. Shamoff, I know that this board would like to shake each and every member of your staff's hand, so maybe we can start at one end, and yours too, Gary, if we could, and thank you again for doing this. We're so proud of you all.
I am so proud of Okoye Middle School. I know Dr. Jenkins as well. Because of their vision and their expertise in technology, we've hosted the governor three or four times, that they're just such an inspiration, and thank you to staff for recognizing the work that these teachers do, with the high school being the digital pilot for the district. And I went on my school tours towards the beginning of the year and spent some time with Dr. Shamoff, and there, he had some MacBook Airs, and I said, "Now, you didn't have those last year." He said, "Oh, no, but, you know, we've got the high school being the pilot, and our eighth graders have to have some experience on this device before they go." And so, that was just interesting. He bought a few, maybe you could tell us how many he bought, but it's just amazing the quality of instruction, and I've been able to observe algebra lessons using iPads and calculating heights and distances and very tall objects, and it's inspired me to do a little more algebra my own. But congratulations to all of you. You are definitely a leader, and you're recognized as a leader statewide, and we're so very proud of you. Thank you.
Dr. Jenkins.
Thank you, Chairman. I would just add my congratulations to our staff from Okoye and our thanks to the folks from Apple. Some people may not realize that when we first started looking at doing a digital pilot in several of our schools, Okoye Middle School was really our model where we did a lot of research, because they've been doing it for some time. And so, we appreciate their innovation for being out in the forefront in the digital industry for education and are extremely proud of their outcomes. Know they're going to go even much further in the future.
Well, let me again say congratulations. I will share with you, and really with the audience as a whole, that not only are we extremely proud of Okoye Middle School and what they've accomplished, but every district has a show school, and we're a very large district, and we have 186 traditional public schools and 31 charters. And I will share with the audience that we have had so many visiting dignitary groups come from the state and from throughout the country to tour Okoye Middle School. So, on behalf of the school district, thank you so much for all your hard work and for making us look so wonderful as a district. Gary, you made me feel much better sometimes. I know you've given that presentation a million times. Sometimes I'll be introducing my kids, and I'll say, "And this is Alex, and this is Aubrey, and this one is..." What is your name again? So, thank you for everything, though, that Apple does for our district. You're an invaluable partner at Orange County Public Schools. Thank you very much. And at this time, we're going to go into our regular agenda. I know it's FCAT season, so Principal Shaman, you are welcome to stay if you'd like, or if you'd, I know I just mispronounced it, Shamoff, or if you and your staff would like, you can head on out and get ready for tomorrow's school day. Thank you for coming down here tonight. All right, as they're filing out, let me make a couple of business announcements. We don't have a strategic plan update, members of the board. Let me, for the sake of the audience, point out that any member of the audience who is here tonight to speak on any issue before us, you can do so by signing up through a yellow card such as this. You can get these yellow cards from Mrs. McGill, who is a lady to the far-left-hand side of the dais. At that time in the agenda, when your item that you have signed up to speak for is before us, I will call you to come speak to the board. You will have at that time three minutes to address the board and not counting any questions that you may get from the board. I will point out as a preliminary matter that if you are speaking on employee discipline or student matters, those matters will not be shown on the broadcast version of our meetings. All of our meetings, with the exception of those issues, are broadcast to the county, but in keeping with school board policy, we do not broadcast the student discipline or the employee discipline matters. If you have any schedule constraints, please let Mrs. McGill know as well, and we'll try to accommodate those. Dr. Jenkins, at this time, before I go to amending the agenda, do we have any newly-appointed administrators to recognize tonight?
We have two chairmen and members of the board. First of all, I'd like to introduce to you Jamie Anderson, who was a resource teacher at Eccleston Elementary. Upon your approval, she will become the new assistant principal at Shenandoah Elementary.
Good evening. I'd like to take a minute to thank the board. Thank you, Chairman Sablet, Mr. Rick Roach, Superintendent Jenkins, and Principal McClellan for this opportunity. I'd also like to thank family and friends for all your support, and thank you to all the previous administrators and mentors that have helped me get to this point to date. I appreciate it, and I'm very excited to work at Shenandoah.
Then we have Robin Strange, who was instructional support teacher at Apopka High School. She will be the new senior administrator, career in technical education, for Winter Park Tech. That was formerly the title of assistant director.
Thank you, Dr. Jenkins. And Chairman Sablet and members of the board, I just appreciate this opportunity very much. Thank you. Thank you also to Dr. Jara, Mr. Fritz, Dr. Armbruster, and Ms. LaShaco at Winter Park Tech. I'm thrilled to be working with you. Ms. Santana, my first API, thank you for coming. And my family, Bob, Christian, Robert, Kristen, Sarah, and my parents, Neil and Bonnie, thank you very much for this opportunity. I look forward to serving at Winter Park Tech. Thank you.
Well, Robin, I just love that school, Winter Park Tech. I visit that often, although it's not in my district, but I'm real, real proud of you. I'm real happy you're there. Janie, you are right smack in the middle of my district, and matter of fact, if I were to have young children again, they would go to that school, Shenandoah. How about that? And what a special place Shenandoah is. It's really very, very homey and family-like, and I've always, always loved going over there. So, congratulations to you, and I look forward to working with you.
Thinking of all these quips, I'm trying to figure out what I can say and what I can't say, Mr. Roach. I'll just pass. Acquiring minds want to know. Well, Ms. Anderson, on behalf of the board, congratulations, and Ms. Strange, congratulations as well. Your families and your loved ones and your colleagues should be very, very proud of you. I share with every group of newly-appointed administrators that when you really boil it down, your appointment signifies one very simple thing to this board, and that is embodying the word "trust." When I say "trust," it means that we trust your leadership abilities, we trust your skills as educators, and most importantly, we trust you with our community's children. So, you should be very, very proud tonight, and at this time, we'll pause to allow you, because it is again the middle of FCAT season, and I see some students out there that need to be studying. Congratulations. All right, Dr. Jenkins, are there any changes to our agenda this evening?
There are several. Chairman and members of the board, first of all, item 4.01, on the personnel agenda, there was a classified employee initials TR that has been removed. Item 10.01, language revisions to the bid matrix are underlined for you. Item 14.01, that's request approval of a quitclaim deed. The name correction in the title and recommended action has been corrected in the background language, as well as Copeland Estate Quitclaim Deed. The attachment has been added after the board book was released. Item 14.02, the actual contracts were added after the release of the board book. Item 14.05 will be moved to consent, I'm sorry, first of all, let me add non-consent. 16.01, that is a resolution on the high school in the rural settlements. I'm sorry, resolution on high schools in rural settlements. And then, item 14.05 is being moved to item 16.02. That is a concurrency mitigation agreement for the Canopy Oaks development.
Okay. And board members, we have, I believe, a student discipline issue that is at item 5.02. Our practice is we pull those off consent and put them on non-consent, so I'm going to pull that off and put that matter in the matter of TR onto new item 16.03. And before I do that, let me make, let me confirm that that is in fact a student discipline matter. Mr. Marrowell is the speaker on that issue? Is it? Okay. All right, thank you. All right, we'll move that to 16.03. All right, I find cause to amend the agenda as proposed. Can I have a motion to do so, please? It's been moved by Mr. Roach, seconded by Ms. Gould. Is there any debate or discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Show the agenda amended as proposed. All right, we have no public hearings this evening. On the consent agenda, we do have, though, two speakers. The first one is somebody well-known to us, Ms. Norma Mendoza, who's going to come up and speak on our school social workers. And Ms. Mendoza, you didn't know we knew you so well, did you?
No, I'm surprised.
But I'd like you to start, ma'am, by please stating your name and address for the record, and then we're all yours. Thank you for all your work.
Thank you. Norma Mendoza, 14315 Chevrolet Drive, Orlando, Florida, 32837. Good evening. On behalf of Orange County Public School Social Workers, I would like to take the opportunity to thank Dr. Jenkins, Superintendent, the school board, and Dr. Vicky Cartwright, Senior Director of Exceptional Student Education. We are humbled and honored by the recognition you have bestowed on us today. The National Association of School Social Workers 2014 Social Work Month theme is "All People Matter." It is important, it is an important theme as it defines who we are as social workers. As school social workers, we are integral part of our district, working behind the scenes, ensuring that students have the basic needs in order to attend school so that they will be academically successful. We are the bridge that connects the family, school, and the community, and continually work with the parents of our students, helping them navigate through our academic system. As important team members of our exceptional educational department, we provide evaluations that are necessary for appropriate educational placement. We are the experts in knowing and sharing community resources with our families. We are close, we have close relationships with the homeless department, which has afforded us the opportunity to work on special projects such as Cool Fit, which provides new clothing to many of our homeless students. Every day, we are counseling students and their parents about the importance of staying in school. Schools are being assisted with attendance and truancy issues. School social workers often have to petition truancy court to help our students stay in school, which subsequently improves the district's overall attendance rate. School social workers understand that our parents depend heavily on us for educational support. We support teachers with scientific evidence-based strategies for classroom and individual interventions, and strive with them to be the top producers of students in the nation. We work hard, we work hand-in-hand with the school social psychologists as part of the crisis response team. This year, we have provided assistance to over 30 schools in crisis. School social workers have reached out to parents and children during their most difficult times. Not only do we provide support to the students and faculty at the schools, we are often in the homes of the families assisting family members with the tragedy that occurs. We would like to thank school board chairman Bill Sablet and school board member Rick Roach for acknowledging the social workers at the counselor's breakfast. It was great to hear how you value our profession and our support of the work we do. We also appreciate Dr. Lawson for recognizing the pivotal role we played in the graduation expectation project. We would like to thank Mary Bridges for her support during her position as Director of Psychological and Social Services. I would like to dedicate 2014 Social Work Month to the school social workers that have recently passed away, Wen Pendervis and Evelyn Cartagena. We miss you, and we will always admire your dedication to the social work profession. In conclusion, please remember, the social worker every day leaves a lasting memory. Memories of what we saw that day during the home visit, memories of what we heard that day, what a student told us, and hopefully, at the end of the day, we will have memories of who we helped that day. Thank you.
I know I share the board's, the board's thoughts on how important you are, how incredibly important you are. You team up with school psychologists and counselors to form what I like to call the safety net of the schools. You're the ones that find out where the kids are, you bring them back, you get them on track, and without that, I just, honest to goodness, don't know where a lot of kids would be. So, I just want to tell you how valued you are, and we can't have enough of you. We can't have enough of you. We've got to be able to expand the space and get you out there, because a lot of kids are off-track, and when they're off-track, they're not in school, and when they're not in school, they're not achieving. So, thank you very much from the bottom of my heart, and thank you for those kind words as well. I enjoy that breakfast very much.
Dr. Jenkins.
Chairman, members of the board, I just wanted to add my thanks. As your superintendent, we know how hard you work. We know how critical you are to the success of our students. Thank you for your dedication to over 187,000 students here in OCPS.
Well, Ms. Mendoza, Mary, and Dr. Cartwright, and all your colleagues, let me just echo the thanks. I want you to know that when I came to your breakfast that morning, I was speaking on behalf of the entire board. This entire board values our social workers immensely. Frankly, as I said at the breakfast that morning, I believe, and as I've said many, many other times, what pains us the most is that we don't get the funding to increase the ratios to where we know they need to be, and that is a priority of the board, and I will share with you that this board has stated many, many times, that is a priority of ours. I'll also share with you, as an officer of the court, that our school social workers, I receive nothing but constant praise from the juvenile judges and from the judges over there at the circuit court and county court level both, about our social services and the good work that our folks do. And lastly, on a personal note, I'm not sure if the social worker helped me on this issue, but I think it's just a good anecdotal example of how much these folks care about the kids in our school system, how much deeply they care. Recently, it was brought to me at my attention, a child who was struggling to get to school, and because of it, had not come to school for literally weeks, and our social workers went out and found that child, made sure that that child had transportation back to school, and I think, in all likelihood, saved that child's educational future, because that child was a junior at the time and would never have come back to school had it not been for our social workers. So, let me have you all please stand collectively, and let us give you all a big hand for the work you do. We have one more speaker on the, did you repunch your button, Mr. Roach? Did you want to say something further? Was that from before? Okay. On the agenda tonight, yes, you know what? I was about to say, if you all would like to go as well, it is FCAT testing week, so our students really need you. Thank you for coming down tonight. All right, as they're filing out, we have one other speaker on the special, or excuse me, on the consent agenda, Ms. Kathy Hedinger. Ms. Hedinger, welcome. And Ms. Hedinger, I believe, has come to speak to us on the charter school contract with UEDA, Agenda Item 7.01. If you could start with your name and address, Ms. Hedinger.
I think I wrote down 713 Woodward for a business address. Yeah, I'm just gonna say a few words about, really, when I, when I get up here and speak, or I've talked to a lot of you individually, I like to call it the wrath of math, because I was part of the Sputnik. I was part of the Sputnik generation that really did a lot of STEM, and the fact that math is ignored just oddly enough breaks my heart, you know? 9,400 out of 14,000, as I shared, is not 87%. You know, that is not the graduation rate. And in this case, if you increase charter attendance, you decrease public schools. Now, I was told we don't have to worry about closing public schools, and one of the things that I've done is come to a lot of these meetings. So I have actually personally heard people up here say things. I didn't read it in the newspaper. And I heard that with 4,000 new students a year, public schools would not be closed. And yet, we sit here and we approve the privatization of our lives and our tax dollars. And we say things like, "It's okay to have an FCAT," and we don't tell parents they can opt out of the FCAT, and people don't need to take that test. And we keep praising it. And one thing that it's set up to do is to flunk kids out of 10th grade. Now, in 3rd grade, it's set up to flunk them to privatization. Part of that privatization is charters, which, as we've all heard many times here, has precious little oversight. And a nice way to look at that is that you hand a business tax dollars, in one case, a principal was making $500,000 a year. And what charters do then is that they take three months of teachers' pay, close, do bankruptcy, and say, "See you in bankruptcy court" to the teachers. And then, of course, Orange County, our taxpayers, have to then come up with the pay, and then the students are dispersed to who knows where. The city center is a great spot for charters, because in order to even last a year, they don't want to pull from the 60% reduced-price free lunch. They want that other 40%. So if they're centrally located, then parents can come by and drop off their kids downtown, and they will be more prosperous. At least, they have cars. You know, they're better off than a lot of parents in Orange County. And one thing that I would like us to do is to look at the building of every charter. Does it have good fire safety? Does it have the right sprinklers? Does it have the right distance for things? Because that's something that the school board can do. We can look at that charter, we can see that it has, and let's close down the charter and not close down Fern Creek Elementary. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hedinger. All right, Ms. Moore.
I just had one question for the superintendent with regard to the speaker. I was, perhaps Dr. Bernier is here. Dr. Jenkins, I wasn't aware that the school district, I know we provide oversight, but do we actually provide the BCCO support to charter schools in this construction process? Or maybe someone knows from, from facilities, I don't know if they have to follow the same codes and inspections and all, because that's what she referenced. I was just curious if you could bring a little more light to that, shed some light on that issue.
That's an important point. Our oversight is extremely limited. Dr. Bernier is coming to the podium. Our oversight is extremely limited for charter schools, as this board well knows, but I think it's helpful to clarify that for the public as well. Dr. Bernier.
Thank you, Superintendent. Ms. Moore, to the point of the speaker, a couple of things. One is charters are exempt from SRF accommodations by the Florida statute. So they're not, they're not held to the same standard that you, as a board, are held to when you open your own school. Additionally, not only do the local fire marshals and the local building code people inspect, but our own safety department, our own fire marshal does the inspections to be sure that the life safety issue of all students is, is well taken care of.
All right. Ms. Flynn, and then I've had a new speaker sign up for 7.01. You want to go right now, Ms. Flynn, or wait? Why don't you go now, if you'd like?
Thank you, thank you. This is just a real quick comment on our, to our last speaker. You know, by law, we have to give each charter application a serious review with fidelity according to a template that the state provides us. And often, when we give that our best review, and we decline, the state DOE comes back and reverses our decision. So, we just had that happen with three charters that we denied, and we were overturned. So, I think this board is very serious about our, our participation in the application process, and I think we give every charter serious review, but sometimes, it just doesn't come down to us.
All right. We have an additional speaker on 7.01, Ms. Diana Moore. Ms. Moore, welcome.
Good evening, Diana Moore, 1020 Webster Avenue, representing CTA. Actually, I have a question. In light of the fact that the VAM scores are being published for teachers, are the charter schools also participating in the same Marzano evaluation system? And will their charter, will their VAM scores also be published since they're getting a five-year contract?
When you're done speaking, Ms. Moore, we'll have Dr. Bernier answer that. Is that the extent of your, okay. Thank you, Ms. Moore. Dr. Bernier, do you want to address that?
Superintendent? Thank you, Chairman. I can speak to the fact that all charter schools have to abide by the Senate bill in evaluating their teachers based upon student achievement. All right? They do not necessarily have to adopt the Marzano model, but they have to develop a model that's approved by the state, of which their teachers are reviewed, and their performance is, a percentage of their performance is based upon student achievement scores. They do have VAM information on each one of their teachers. I have not yet seen anything from the Office of School Choice through Adam Miller regarding the publication of that data, but I will make that inquiry first thing tomorrow morning.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Bernier. I just want to make a couple of comments, address some of the issues raised by the last two speakers. First of all, this is a very, almost surreal position I'm in right now, and even responding to one of the comments, at least. This board has entertained between 70 and 75 charter applications in the last three years, of which we've approved eight. We have a reputation statewide as being the most stringent school districts in the entire state as far as what we require of our charter applicants. Unlike the other major urban districts, we are, I believe, the only or one of only two urban districts of any size where this board personally vets each and every charter application and sits through a 45-minute to a one-hour hearing with each one. And frankly, of the eight that we've approved, two or perhaps three, I'm not sure of the exact number, have actually come over our objection on appeal to the State Charter Appeals Commission, and then ultimately, the State Board of Education. So, you know, if anything, sometimes I think we get a reputation as a board as being extremely hostile to charter applicants, which I also don't think is fair, but never thought I'd be defending our record on, on approval, because certainly, the numbers speak for themselves. Value-added model, you know, I can't speak for the board on this. You know, I was quoted in the paper today. I'm not happy myself. I don't think many in public education that those value-added model scores are being released publicly. I think that that's a mistake by the courts. I don't see anything to be gained by it. So, you know, we share your concern there. And certainly, if they're released from the traditional neighborhood public school side, they should also be released from the charter school side. We would, I would agree with you on that wholeheartedly, and I suspect most board members will agree on that as well, from the nods I'm seeing. The last thing is, you know, we try to be very liberal with the rules of humanity under Robert's Rules of Order. You know, I let that go, because I think the speaker was speaking in opposition to the grant of a charter to the UEDA charter school, the UETA charter school. But I must say, on behalf of the board, that there is absolutely no connection whatsoever between the grant or denial of the UEDA charter application and the, I think it was a Fern Creek issue that that speaker was speaking to. We are, is one of the reasons we were late with the pre-agenda meeting, we are constructing a new community school for the residents of the Paramore area, K8 school. When we do that, and we also took a board policy decision over a year and a half ago, correct me if I'm wrong, to end the island zones with our unitary status. That will take the Fern Creek population down to below 180 students in a school that was built for 800 students. So, that's a unique issue with our inner-city urban schools. I can assure you, it's not an issue, as some in the audience know, with our schools out in the suburbs, but we do have a number of very, very small schools. And when they get down that low, that small, we do have to find a solution, because it's very, very hard to operate a school with only 180 students in it. And we have not made any final decisions yet on that solution, but we're working through that process as a board. So, thank you for both speakers for coming before us tonight. We always appreciate the comments. All right. I don't believe I have anything further on the consent agenda for our speakers. So, with seeing none, can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? It's been moved by Vice Chair Gordon, seconded by Mrs. Robinson. Is there any debate or discussion on the consent agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Show the consent agenda adopted unanimously. All right. Mr. Rodriguez, will you be handling the board resolution on high schools in rural settlements?
Good evening, school board members, Mr. Chair. As we mentioned in the pre-agenda meeting, subsequent to the meeting that was held, the joint meeting that was held just last Tuesday with the Orange County Commission, it was apparent that there was an interest on this board to adopt a resolution of some sort declaring the intent of the board that you are not going to be purchasing real property in the immediate future as it pertains to high schools in rural settlements. As such, a resolution has been prepared for your approval. I don't know if it's the pleasure of the board to just have it introduced into the record, or if we need to read that. It's entirely up to the board, but it just states the facts as they have been presented throughout the process, and that the school board, in effect, will, in the concluding paragraph, provides that the School Board of Orange County, Florida hereby commits to not purchase real property for use as a high school when such properties are located within areas currently designated as rural settlements on Orange County Government's future land use map until such time as the sooner of either A, the county's siting ordinance is revised, or B, a court of competent jurisdiction resolves the current dispute regarding the use of the subject properties of relief high school in the rural settlement, or C, the county and the school board otherwise mutually resolve their current dispute. And the second section of this resolution provides that there will be a copy of this provided the Orange County Government as well as the school board.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Rodriguez, for that. Before I go to Ms. Gould to speak on issue, or any, any questions on the resolution itself? Just questions. Did you have a question, Ms. Gould? Let me start with you, Ms. Gould, then I'll go to Mrs. Gordon.
I actually, it's that last section on that paragraph. When we sat in that meeting last week, I thought our, the resolution we were talking about would be that, of course, we want to go through and change the school siting ordinance together, which you referred to, but then on our part, that we would not look at any future rural settlements. This sounds like it's contingent on the outcome of this site. Is that the case, that it is contingent on the outcome of this site? Or are we talking about apples to apples? There's this site, and then there's the future.
Excuse me. The resolution states that the Orange County School Board will not enter into any contracts of any sort to acquire any real property for use as a high school for any other sites that are located in rural settlements, currently designated rural settlements. So, if you reach an agreement with the county that says to that same effect, that will supplant this resolution. If you change the siting ordinance, that will supplant this resolution. If a court of competent jurisdiction comes back with whatever determination, that, of course, will supplant this resolution. So, this is a measure that, from the legal perspective, we saw that the board's perspective was, you don't want the public to be concerned that you're going to be in the process of acquiring properties in the rural settlement between now and however long this gets resolved, whether it's the siting ordinance changes, you reach a conclusion, or the courts end up with a resolution.
Okay. So then, we would be able to continue to work on that path, and that just covers it while we're in, trying to settle this issue of where this current high school will go.
That is correct, yes, ma'am.
Just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Mrs. Gordon.
Yes, mine is similar to that. And you probably answered it, but I'm, I'm still, I still need clarification. Is this considered a good-faith resolution?
I would consider this, Ms. Gordon, to be a good-faith resolution for those individuals that live in rural settlements, because their fear is that we, that you, as a school board, may acquire property in the interim while you're pending any changes to the siting ordinance. As you may recall, the staffs have worked on recommended changes to the siting ordinance. It was clear from the, from the joint meeting with the county that a number of the members on this board shared a belief in changing that siting ordinance in the future to eliminate the purchase or the use of high schools, not middle schools, not elementary schools. And this, this resolution, to be clear, only applies to high schools. So, from that perspective, if you're an individual living in a rural settlement, I would hope that they see this as a good-faith measure by your board to give them some additional protections and assurances that you're not going to be acquiring real property in the interim.
And I do understand that it's more of a concern with several of the commissioners, Orange County commissioners, for that. So you did answer that, and you did answer the other, when you mentioned only high schools. So if the board, if this board tonight, if we voted yea, we're saying that we will continue, but we are saying we are not looking to come after other rural settlements, to build any schools other than the middle or an elementary within that rural settlement.
That is exactly correct, Ms. Gordon.
But if we vote nay tonight, what are we saying?
You're, you're really, you're not saying that you're gonna, well, different people would interpret it different ways, I'm sure, Ms. Gordon, but obviously, a no vote on this resolution just indicates that your board at this time is not prepared to make that assurance. It doesn't mean that you're going to purchase. We have no rural settlement properties currently designated to be purchased. I can speak with great assurance that our real estate department is not looking at any properties for high school purposes in rural settlements. So, a nay vote doesn't mean that you're going to go out and buy properties. It would just mean that the board isn't committed to that kind of assurance at this time.
Okay. And then, the final question on page three, okay? The last couple of lines above Section 2, where it states that the county and the school board otherwise mutually resolve their current dispute. What dispute? As it relates to just the rural settlement with the not building of the high schools, or why? Just to make it clear for me.
Sure. That, that's in reference, in the previous paragraphs, there was reference to the dispute that is currently ongoing with the county, obviously, with regards to the Beck property, the one that you own. So, if we reach a settlement, whether it's via mediation or through other process where the two boards get together and say, "We have now reached a new resolution," this, this resolution would not be able to supplant that settlement agreement.
Okay. So, and I'd say that would have been my last question, but I'm, when you brought that question in, help me with this. So, if this board votes tonight, yea, in favor of this, we, are we assuming that the county is going to accept this resolution?
It's, I don't think it's for the county to accept or not accept.
I'm saying in good faith, because they have to accept it if it's going to be any kind of, I'm hearing Daryl on this end, but that's okay, because I'm glad I'm hearing you. Okay? Because we said otherwise mutually resolve their current dispute, but what if they are not in, they do not agree with our resolution? Is this resolution, I thought it's supposed to be a good-faith resolution. We're extending the olive branch, okay, for future development in rural settlement of not building the high schools. But I'm trying to see where, is this a satisfaction for us keeping our words, or is this an olive branch that we're extending to ask them to consider so that we could mutually resolve our dispute?
I think it's the latter. I think you're, you're extending the olive branch to the county and saying, "Look, we, you as a school board are serious about having further discussions to resolve the dispute, and you're serious about trying to reach a compromise on the, the siting ordinance, which you know, between both of you, you have the authority to change. They can't change it without you, you can't change it without them. So, if either one of those issues takes place, you've reached an agreement with them." So I think it is a good-faith measure, a good olive branch measure, for them to have some assurances that the school board is not going to take a, a different posture.
So, we will be sharing this with them, and I do want to commend the chairman for bringing So we will be sharing this with them, and I do want to commend the chairman for bringing this up at the community meeting with Ms. Pam Gould and her community on that evening, because this is something we wish we had earlier, because, you know, I just had little reservations, so.
Well, I mean.
When are we going to tell them this after we vote tonight? How will it be communicated to certain county commissioners?
It will be sent via a memorandum from our office to their attorneys for their circulation with their board, so, and they will distribute it accordingly.
All righty, thank you so very much, and thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I do commend you for bringing this in, and I, I wish that we had thought about this years ago, because it has been a thorn in our side, and I do not want this to continue. I think that how your board does not want it to, so thank you for coming up with the resolution, and I hope that it does what we want it to do.
Ms. Caddell.
Mr. Rodriguez, let me see if I'm understanding. As, as we got closer to having the joint meeting with the county commissioners, all of a sudden, the conversation started coming from other rural settlements, and it seemed like the conversation moved to what we were, you know, all of a sudden, there was a line behind that rural settlement, and it's like, I received an email from the, the person who heads the rural settlement of Corner Lake, and basically demanding not to have any schools at all. Their middle school is in the middle of their rural settlement. So my understanding of what we're doing with this is we are sending an assurance to the other rural settlements that we're not going to buy any land with this agreement, we are not going to buy any land in their areas for a high school, and that we are, we are not, we are not, I don't want to say diluting, but we are not hurting our position that if, for some reason, we can't come to a settlement, and this goes to the courts, and the courts rule in our favor, and the courts say, this is, this is an adequate place to put this high school, then we have, we'll come back as a body and figure out where we go next if we cannot come to an agreement before the courts decide. Is that correct?
That's essentially correct, Ms. Caddell. So the, the resolution extends the olive branch to the county, because you're correct. Back in the community meeting that Ms. Gould held, which I know that you and Ms. Gordon and Chairman Soblet attended, along with Ms. Gould, there was reference to a concern over other rural settlements, and I think, again, that was voiced in, in a subsequent, I think at the joint meeting, it might have been voiced as well. So this sort of takes the sting out of that concern, because your commitment as a board is that you are not going to be making any purchases of real property. Now, when does that end? That ends either A, when you change the siting ordinance, which would then create whatever the new changes are, based on agreement of the two bodies. It would be, either be B, you reach an agreement with the county to resolve the dispute, which, again, I'm sure would undertake some type of consideration of what happens with regards to rural settlement, or if no agreement is reached, there's no change in the siting ordinance, but a court comes out with a determination, with whatever that determination is, this body would have to follow that determination, so that would supplant whatever is in this resolution, so.
Can I ask one follow-up question?
Sure.
May I ask one follow-up question? There seems to be a perception that we've gone out and bought all this property in a rural settlement for a high school, when this all happened a long time ago. I mean, it happened back in 2004, and according, it's my understanding, and if I've got this wrong, Mr. Rodriguez, please correct me, but the way the school's siting ordinance was stated, when that property was acquired, there never had been a denial by the county commission for any school to be located in a rural settlement, that it only happened when the Evans High School conversation began, and at that point, the Beck property was already in the land bank. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Ms. Gould.
Ms. Caddell made me question this again. On the B, if, if we were to go to court and we, and the judgment was that we were able to build, would there still be an opportunity to come back and, and revise the rural settlement choices for high school? Or would we be bound by that court judgment?
We cannot say with certainty what the judgment will be, so the judgment could be limited to that one piece of property. The judgment could be broader in scope about how you interpret compatibility, because that is one of the concerns we have, is how does the county interpret compatibility versus how the school board has viewed compatibility? So without being able to speak to that with, with any certainty, we would have to wait to see what that judgment says. If it's only binding on the one property, then it's up to this board, you could adopt another resolution at that time. You could still continue to work on the siting ordinance, or, you know, reach another agreement on the future of acquisition of property in rural settlements, but I think at that point in time, it's appropriate for the, for this board, if that's how far it goes, assuming there's no joint resolution, assuming that there's no changes to the siting ordinance, and that you're left with a court determination, then at that point, that board will consider the effectiveness of any future resolutions.
Well, and the reason I say that is, I, I do feel this is intended as an olive branch. I want to make sure it's read that way, as an olive branch, that this is what we wholeheartedly want to try to do, is come up with some assurances for mutual understanding for, for future decisions. And in the B in this, in that one section, is the one that made me question it to begin with, the way that that was written. So I don't know if in the memorandum that goes with it, we would, could say, depending on how life goes, we would always keep that door open for conversation, or if we need to say something like that, but I just want to make sure this is interpreted as an olive branch and not as anything else.
If, if I could predict the future, Ms. Gould, and be able to tell you that we're either going to reach a resolution or do the siting ordinance, we would not have included B. But because I cannot predict those two options, the only other remaining option is, if you don't fix the siting ordinance and you don't reach a joint resolution, what's left? It's that the court will make a determination, because that's the direction this board has given our legal team to go forward with. So any one of those three, I'm confident, will be the final conclusion on this, and when that reaches that point, this resolution then will be replaced essentially by whatever those outcomes are.
Okay.
But my memorandum will probably be very succinct to say, this was approved by the board, because I don't want the county commission to reinterpret your resolution, this resolution, through my additional verbiage, and a memorandum, it should just always be, this is what was adopted last night, and unless I'm given directions otherwise here this evening by the board, but essentially, we want to make sure that the resolution is the resolution, that the words speak for themselves.
Okay, and I, I don't think there's anything that you can add to this, because it does, when, when I reread it three times, it does speak the facts. I just don't want, as I said, it to be misinterpreted, but anything but an olive branch, so I think that'll just be our job.
Ms. Flynn.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to comment on, on the resolution, because I too have a rural settlement in District 2 that I represent, and, you know, I've heard from one of the representatives, and, you know, their feeling is that if you hurt one resolution, another one feels it. I think, I don't see this as an olive branch. I see this as a direction that we, as a board, are going to take in regard to siting our own schools. To be truthful, I look at it as showing other members of our community that we are working in good faith to be good stewards of the land and to try to accommodate values that many people in those rural settlements take. Who knows if the county commissioners are going to look at this as an olive branch, or as a good faith effort, or whatever? I mean, I, I don't see them getting together and discussing this as a group, but for me, I see it as a good faith measure that we are putting out to the constituents who we represent, and we're saying, this is an important issue for us, we have a school in a community that needs it, but we will look to the future, and we won't purchase any land in a rural settlement, even though the unintended consequence could be that it could hurt those communities in, in the future. I mean, it could, it could, you know? But I see this as a policy of our own, a value of our own, that we're going to put forth there, put forth, and I support it. Thank you.
All right. Board members, any other questions or comments?
I have one.
And Mrs. Gordon.
Mr. Chairman, this is directed to general counsel, but I don't, you know, we're in the middle of litigation, so I really don't know what we could totally ask, but would this be an item, if we voted yea tonight, would this be an item that would be handed over to the courts?
I suspect it could, but I also know that we have worked with our outside counsel, and moreover, I think the determination that we're focusing on is, what was the result of the county's determination? What facts did they consider? What evidence was presented? Remember, they were before, they were acting in the quasi judicial capacity. So a lot of the rhetoric, before, during, and after, I'm sorry, before and after, the court will have to take it with, give it its weight, its proper weight in terms of evidence. So could it be introduced? Yes, but I think the courts are going to focus more on, what was the rationale, the determinations, as to why they denied the school board? Why did the county commission deny the school board their application? So your decision here today, it does not, I don't think, complicate or otherwise compromise your legal standing or your legal position, and that was vetted with our outside legal team for that assurance as well.
Okay, very good, and, and I know you just stated that it may, with our outside counsel, and it could be entered as an exhibit. Can you just refresh my memory again, and reference, this is not a trial by jury or anything like this? Can you tell us, just tell me, well, and the board too, they may know, and I, and I know you've given it to us, but I'm, I'm trying to get back the decision. When you say the courts will make a determination, who would be considered the, it is if the lone judge in itself, are there hearing officers, are there just the attorney from the county, and then the attorneys from the school board, and then the judge? How is this, each, each will present their part, and then the one lone judge make the decision, or how would that be?
Ms. Gould, that's a good question. It's actually a panel of three judges that would take the decision of the Board of County Commissioners as an appellate issue, and that three judge panel has been assigned. Judge Jose Rodriguez, Judge Alicia Lattimore, and Judge Heather Higbee would be the three presiders, barring any changes to that three judge panel, but those are the ones that have been assigned and would be hearing all matters. It is not a jury trial, so they would be the triers of, of fact and law.
Okay, and I, I need to ask this, just, you know, basically for me, because I, you know, this is really important. If they're going to hear all matters, generally in a jury trial, sometimes they put the jewelry together and they go out and visit the scene of the crime, and we don't have a crime yet, thank God, but how is it, is it something, can we offer for them? If they're going to be making the decision, will all matters be held before them, that they can actually visit all of the sites that have been brought up? How can that be handled? Because right now, we're in a draw with the county, and the county is thinking that there are other sites out there. So if these three judges are going to determine and hear all of the matter, how could they make a decision on any of the matter if they have not seen any of the exhibit sites?
We're going to enroll you in the Florida State College of Law, because that's a very good legal strategy question, but one that we have not crossed yet, and quite frankly, we would want to discuss either in executive session or with our own outside counsel, just because there are permutations of different options as to why that's correct or incorrect, I'll put it that way.
Thank you so very much.
All right, seeing no further speakers, would anybody like to make a motion to either approve or deny the proposed resolution?
I'll move it.
All right, Mrs. Gould has moved approval of the resolution, it's been seconded by Vice Chair Gordon. Is there any further debate or discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Show the motion adopted unanimously. All right, we are now on Agenda Item 16.02. Dr. Jenkins, this was former Item 1405, the CMA for Canopy Oaks. Who's going to be handling this for staff?
That item was moved at the request of Board Member Caddell. We can certainly have a review of the actual CEA by staff.
Well, let me ask Ms. Caddell or the board members, do you all need a review of the CMA by, by staff, or, Ms. Caddell, what's your pleasure?
I'm really going to leave it to you, to the chair. I mean, this is, this is what I talked about at the joint meeting. This is a, this is not adding some more to an already agreement, this is brand-new development, and it is putting children, and if I'm misunderstanding this, someone, please tell me, this is putting additional children into West Orange High School when we have no solution at this time. I just feel like, until we figure out where we're going to have a relief school, that everyone's just going to have to put their seat belts on, and we're going to have to figure this out, and then all of these can come back to us at that time for us to make a decision. And so I would just like to have a vote on it, and I'd like to hear a discussion on how long are we going to continue to put additional students in West Orange High School, even though it says until a solution is made? You know, I, I just have a problem with that. I just think until this is resolved, that I am not comfortable putting any more children in, in West Orange High School.
Okay, before I go to Ms. Gould, what I need to get you noodling on is, is what type of motion you'd like to make. I think the appropriate motion, if you want to lay it on the table indefinitely, is to do just that, move to lay it on the table, which does require a second, does not allow any debate, and it passes by a simple majority motion.
I, I would like to move that we lay it on the table.
Look, can I ask you to hold off on that motion until I hear from Ms. Gould? Because if there's no debate on that motion, I would like to hear from anybody who'd like to speak.
Okay.
If that's okay with you. Mr. Rodriguez?
I'll pull that back.
Just make sure, I think one of your cards may be a speaker in the audience, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Rodriguez. Let me, let me do, let me go to Ms. Gould first, and then I'm going to go to the speaker.
Well, two things. One, I think in the way that, and I need clarification from staff on this, I think, and Ms. Caddell referred to this, we have built in kind of a stop mat, stopgap measure into the language while we're in, and before we can go into design with the high school, that, that building does not happen. Is that not true, that we haven't put that language in there, that they, even though they, they can start their planning, but they can't actually stick a shovel in the ground?
Dr. Jenkins, let me go to you before I go to Mr. Smith or whoever you designate.
Thank you, Chairman. Actually, Ms. Fernandez is best prepared to speak to this.
Okay. Ms. Fernandez.
Thank you, Ms. Jenkins. Ms. Gould, I think you're thinking about a CEA. CEAs have that built-in, excuse me, built-in provision, because we have a little bit more control over that particular process, because it's a lot earlier on in the development phase. With the CMA, we don't have that capability, and we don't have that language added into those agreements.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that clarification.
Thank you for that clarification. The second thing is, you know, as hard as last Tuesday night was, I think, on all of us, being in a very unique situation, having had both the chairman and the mayor refer to, this is the first time, to our known knowledge, we've had to have this kind of a dispute resolution co-board meeting. I feel we're on track to a solution. I feel everybody is committed to that. And, you know, I, more than anyone, realize how intense life is on the west side of town, but I believe this has eight additional students to it, and I hate to put up any one developer while we're in this tender negotiation stage as the sacrificial lamb. And I'm just going to lay it out like that, because I think we are all operating on good faith that we are going to come to a resolution on this. And, you know, if we can't, through our subcommittee meetings that we talked about and the mitigation process, I probably will feel differently after that. But right now, I want to act in good faith that we are going to make it by 2017. So, that's my piece.
All right. Let me do this. I do have a speaker that I was remiss in not remembering about earlier. So, we usually go to speakers' boards. We have a lot of board discussion. The speaker is Mason Simpson. Mr. Simpson, welcome, sir. I'm sorry, I overlooked your card. If you could, sir, state your name and address once you get to the lectern, and then you have three minutes to address the board.
I'm the sacrificial lamb. Seriously. Excuse me, I've got a bad call. My name is Mason Simpson, live at 9315 Doyle Circle in Windermere. And I'm here tonight wearing two hats. I'm a father with children in public schools in West Orange, as a matter of fact. And from that perspective, I'd like to congratulate all of you and all of your staff and teachers on what a wonderful job you do here. We've only been in Windermere for three years now, but we came here from Vero Beach and Indian River County School System, and we really appreciate the good job you do. The other hat I wear is a businessman. I'm a developer, owner of the property, builder, and I have this small project that's before you. As Ms. Gould pointed out, it's 59 lot, single-family subdivision, and, but for eight credits that it didn't have, it would have passed through the concurrency review without any problem. Interestingly enough, when I first applied back in September, I was told about the concurrency mitigation agreement, which is what this is. And I, it was explained to me by your staff that this was a matter of an inter-local agreement with the city of Winter Garden, and the school board, and a developer, if he chose to enter into it. And I had to meet two conditions as the developer. One, I had to have site plan approval from the city, which I had, and they signed off on that application in that regard. And secondly, I had to agree to pay for the additional fees that don't go towards impact fees or anything else, they're just for failed units, and I agreed to pay that. That was $27,000 for the eight units that I failed. And I was told pretty much that this was a routine matter, because it was already solidified or dignified in an agreement with Winter Garden, that if they had somebody that came in with this sort of project, and they gave them approval, and that somebody was willing to pay if they had failed units, they would, it would be approved by the board. And I hope that'll be the case. But this was approved by you all on the first reading in January, and tonight, I just ask your help. You know, I'm a little guy caught between kind of two big giants, and sacrificial lamb is a good, a good term in some respects. But at any rate, I ask you please approve it. Thank you.
The next speaker we have on this issue is Mr. Glynnis Hudson. Ms. Hudson, welcome, ma'am. Ms. Hudson, once you get at the lectern, if you could state your address for the record, please, and then you'll have three minutes to address the board.
Thank you. I'm Dr. Glynnis Hudson, 424 Cedarwood Court, Winter Springs, Florida. I am a chemistry teacher at West Orange High School. I did not come with the intention of speaking. I just came with the intention of showing up at the school board meeting. But hearing the issue that you're talking of, I live the problem that we happen to have there. I'm sure we're all aware that when you have a large population, and you have a small area, and you have limited materials for that population, there is an increase in crime, there's an increase in deviancy, there's an increase in tardiness, and skipping, and fighting. All these things are occurring at West Orange. And while our administrator is admirable in trying to keep these things down, and our teachers, of course, are the hardest-working people in the country, so of course, we do our part to keep things down, it's still an issue. I am not looking at land and finances and none of those things. I'm looking at kids. You've got a lot of kids who need space, and I'm sure we all realize that you've got to give those kids a place to grow. Otherwise, they start to get on top of each other, and things go wrong. I understand that we apparently have the land, we apparently have the area, we need to build the school. West Orange needs to be relieved so that the learning can occur, so that teaching can happen. It is very hard to have 53 minutes, and you've got a class of 40 kids. And I'm sure that you understand as parents, that you want your child to get the best education possible. It is not possible to get the best education when you're in an overcrowded area. So, I'm asking the board to please consider building this school to alleviate our school, so that our teachers and our students can have the best education to prepare them for this century. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hudson. All right. Ms. Gould, had you punched your button a second time, or is that from the last time? All right. Ms. Moore.
Ms. Gould, I know that we were getting into a Roberts Rule discussion, and so, there was the option just to lay on the table, and my understanding with laying on the table is temporary. It means it can be pulled off the table at a subsequent meeting. And so, if I'm understanding, Mrs. C, I guess I should really should direct the question to Mrs. Caddell. Is that what you meant? It was temporary, and it certainly, in two weeks, we could revisit the decision and vote accordingly.
Ms. Caddell, was that your intention, to motion to lay on the table?
Yes.
Okay. Now, that is temporary, although it does need to be moved to pull it off the table at some future point. We're not postponing it to a date certain, which is a different motion. Okay?
I just want to lay it on, I would like to move that we lay it on the table.
Okay. All right. I have a question of staff on the CMA. Mr. Rodriguez or Dr. Jenkins? Would it go to Ms. Fernandez? And let me start there before I ask Mr. Simpson the question. We have an idea when this project's coming out of the ground, if it winds its way through the normal process?
Mr. Chairman, I think that would be a better, Mr. Smith would be better to answer the question.
Okay. Mr. Simpson, would you yield to the question and indulge me with an answer to that? When are you looking at coming out of the ground on this?
Yeah, actually, I'm glad you did ask, Mr. Sublet. It's, if we stay on track, we'll be coming out of the ground with houses in the fall. Probably September, October, we'll start construction, would be my plan. We've got, we're on track to have development approval, so we can do the infrastructure in the summertime. And I might mention, and I don't know if this is appropriate to do it at this board, but this is a two-phase project. There's 50 lots, or actually 49 lots in Phase 1, and 10 lots in Phase 2. And Phase 2 is, we're not even seeking final approval for development on that at this moment. Now, I don't know if that, if it's possible for the staff to look at it as two pieces, and maybe the 49 lots pass the review. I know Tyrone is here, and he might know, but I don't.
Okay.
But at any rate, that's the answer to your question.
Thank you, Mr. Simpson. All right. Well, this is a tough one for me. And Ms. Caddell, I want to thank you for holding off on the actual motion, because it's not a debatable motion, but allows us to sort of stake out our positions, and I appreciate your courtesy on that. You know, for, as members of this board knows, for about two years, I hung myself out there on seven-to-one votes, on probably a dozen of them, against CEAs when we did not have school capacity. And we finally got over that hump, in my mind at least, about five, four or five months ago, when the staff came to us with the resolution. We're now, we are seeing in black and white on paper, a direction of the funds that we collect, whether on CMAs or CEAs, towards relieving crowding at those specific schools that are overcrowded, which was one of my major issues. So, you know, it's hard for me to look, Ms. Caddell and I, after all that, for two years, but I'm going to vote against the motion, simply because I just feel like we're making a point at the expense of a party who really is caught up in this. And we just approved a CEA and consent agenda, Item 1403, that added, I think, 10 or 12 new students to another high school Cypress Creek that's even more overburdened. And I just, you know, for me personally, I either need to go back to consistently voting against all of them, where there's not capacity, in which case, we'd set aside what I viewed as a fix of a couple months ago, or for voting for all of them, so long as the money's directed at that particular school. So, that's where I'm at on it. I just wanted to explain why, if the motion is made, I'm going to vote no on it. Ms. Flynn?
Thank you. I want to make sure, because I'm sympathetic to the builders' plight here. I think the situation in Cypress Creek, though, is that they have additional space coming on, coming on soon. And even when you know what the outcome is going to be with relief, from experience, two years or three is a long time to take an overcrowded school. I'm dealing with that in my district right now, where we have relief coming in a year or so, but the school continues to grow. And it, the parents aren't appeased very much by knowing that relief is coming. So, I just want to say, in this situation, we don't know exactly what the outcome's going to be. I would feel a little bit more comfortable if we were a little bit further along in our process with the county, or the litigation, or whatever, to know where we're going to be. I think that makes a difference for me. In the past, we knew that there's going to be a relief in three or four years, or there's going to be an addition to the, that makes a difference to me. But again, as I said, I'm dealing with a situation now where the parents are not happy, and they're going to get a relief school in two years, and they're growing fast, and it's just not coming fast enough. So, I just wanted to put that out to you, that's a little bit of a different type of perspective on it. I think the timing of when the relief comes is key to what we're doing right now.
Ms. Moore.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'm sympathetic to your argument, and of course, this developer as well. But I don't think we're comparing apples to apples particularly, because I think this, West Orange is a unique situation, and the motion is certainly temporary. And so, I'm not considering any of the other overcrowding issues to have the same set of circumstances. So, I hope that I would never have to do this in other parts of the county. But here, this is a unique situation, and as long as he's not coming out of the ground for a couple of months, I don't think it hurts for us to wait, you know, a meeting or two. I think just to be sure that we're clear, that we mean business about, we cannot keep doing this to our children at West Orange. And are we contributing, is the public going to see that we contributed to the problem over all these years, that we kept approving capacity enhancement agreements, and we kept saying yes, and yes, and yes? And so, you know, I think that's something we have to look at in the future. If we don't have a viable solution, and we're having those kinds of problems, I think perhaps when you were voting no all the time before, those were different situations. But I think this is unique, and it requires a unique situation, a unique vote.
Mr. Roach.
I just voted a minute ago to add eight more students to Cypress Creek High School. And that, and I think each school is a little bit unique. It's hard to, it's hard to put a blanket all of, all of them and vote the same way to be consistent. Sometimes I think that gets me in trouble when I'm consistent, because it's not the same situation. Cypress Creek is interesting, because we need a new high school in that area, but we can't have one until the trigger of overcrowdedness hits. You can't build one now and send 300 kids to a high school. So, we've got to find ways at Cypress Creek to continue to, and we do have the benefit of a lot of land out there. It does not impact the elementaries and the middle schools. It's fine with those two. So, I did, I did stretch a little bit, and I appreciate the board's vote on the Cypress Creek addition. For that reason, it's difficult for me to turn down Mrs. Gould's request to add them, because it's even more unique here, that they are going to get a new school somewhere. Theirs is planned within two to three years. Mine is not. So, I'm kind of in, and I also give great credence to the board member who lives in that district, who has to live, live and die on the sword, on the hill with those decisions. But I think that in order to be fair, I would have to support Mrs. Gould in this one.
Ms. Gould.
I actually had a question, if it's okay. Mr. Simpson, what, or Mr. Smith, what, what happens if we table or deny you tonight to your process? Because something Ms. Moore said kind of triggered that for me. If we table this for, you know, the next meeting, because a lot is unfolding in the next couple of weeks, at least we hope so, where does it put your timeline?
Insofar as I know, it won't affect us for a month or so. We're in now for construction plan approval with the city of Winter Garden, which is, I'm told, is like a 45-day process, where they look at the details of, you know, how the sewer works, and how the water, the water lines work, and so forth and so on. And it's not until after they approve that, which is ticketed to be sometime in late April or perhaps May, 1st of May, are we able to get a permit to actually go turn dirt. So, I'm assuming that process would go on at Winter Garden, even though we don't have this concurrency. But at some point, this is going to stop us dead in the water, as far as I know.
I'd like to call a point of order, because I have asked to lay it on the table. If it doesn't have a second, I understand, but it's supposed to be non-debatable. So, I would like to lay this issue on the table.
Okay. Well, I didn't understand you had made the motion yet, you had indulged us in a conversation. So, Ms. Gould, were you finished before I recognized Ms. Caddell for the motion? Are you done? Okay. All right.
And if there's not a second, it dies.
Well, I think there will be a second. Ms. Caddell has made a motion to lay Agenda Item 14.05 on the table. What was originally 1405, now 1602?
To lay on the table the request approval of the school currency mitigation agreement for WG 13-004, Canopy Oaks.
Okay. Is there a second to that motion? There's a second by Ms. Moore? All right. There's no debate on that motion. Does everybody understand what they're voting for? If you vote yea to the motion, you are laying on the table indefinitely. The, what was formerly 1405, the CMA for Canopy Oaks. If you vote no on the motion, you are voting against laying that on the table. Okay? It would come back for a regular vote if the motion fails. Okay? All right. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, no. All right. The motion passes by a five-to-three vote. All right. We are now on Agenda Item 1718. Mr. Rodriguez, do you have any report?
Excuse me. Could I indulge the chair for a minute?
Sure.
I think we have a lot to talk about on Mr. Rodriguez's report. Would it be okay if we took a 10-minute recess? We'll come back really, really quick, but I think we all need a break.
Definitely. All right. We'll recess for 10 minutes. We'll come back at 7:45.
Here's a question for every parent out there. If you could fast-forward 20 years to see how your kid's doing in life, would you do it? Well, we can't time travel yet. to see how your kid's doing in life, would you do it? Well, we can't time travel yet, but we can see the future better with the new Common Core state standards in our schools. They set clear goals for every stage of learning, and they're the same for everyone, no matter what zip code you're in. So, you can be sure your student is really grasping what she needs to know to get to graduation and beyond. Find out how it all works at CommonCoreWorks.org.
All right. Let's go ahead and get started, folks. We're missing Ms. Gordon. Is Mrs. Gordon in the back?
I believe she is.
Do you mind? Thank you, Dr. Vasquez or John. Thank you. I hate to start without her. Okay. I think we are up to, if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Rodriguez's report. Mr. Rodriguez?
Mr. Chairmembers of the board, a couple of items that begin with, they're all mostly related with the Orange County, the West Orange relief. First and foremost, after the joint meeting, obviously, there was some discussion, and an action item sort of left pending, which was how the two bodies are going to proceed. In last week, we have continued dialogue between staff, obviously, and we don't know for sure what the physical makeup will be of their representatives, if it's gonna be Commissioner Boyd, Commissioner Clark, or anyone else, if they're gonna have two people, three people, whatever. I know that you all did receive a letter from Commissioner Boyd, because he copied, it was addressed, it was a memorandum addressed to his board members. We have suggested that we continue down the path of mediation. Our office is close to identifying a mediator that both legal departments are satisfied with in terms of selecting. There was a sort of a compromise issued by Commissioner Boyd. I can get into specifics as to why I don't think that's a valued facilitator to use, but if you want to come find me afterwards, you can certainly address those concerns. But in the process, you're, tonight, I would like to have some direction from this board on two issues. First is which committees, or what process you would like to use to represent you in this process. There's a mediation that will be taking place within the next 21 days, so we need to identify if it'll be one person. If you identify more than one person, it may complicate things, because we'll have to essentially notice that meeting in the sunshine. I'm not sure how that works for mediation process. I've never been a part of a mediation with two public members, but we would learn and do whatever the right thing is to get that mediation scheduled and held and move forward. The second thing, the second component is who you would like to have representing the school board in matters regarding the two areas that were identified in Commissioner Boyd's letter, as well as the two items that were identified at the end of the meeting. And that was the first. Any potential accommodations, changes, recommended amplifications, or other modifications that you would have to the existing BEC property? And the second item was with regards to alternate sites, specifically the north of Albert's site. And I know that Mayor Jacobs asked you to identify your second site, which kind of puts you guys on the spot, and no vote was really taken at that meeting. But obviously, the north of Albert's site was the second preferred site, as identified by Commissioner Boyd. We have also, as an uptake, continued immediately after that meeting, I think you all were copied on some correspondence with Fran Pignone, who owns the property. I'm glad to say that we have continued dialogue. We don't have any written correspondence yet, which is what I'm hoping to get. But I know that Ms. Fernandez and I have been working diligently with her, and now her attorney, Paul Rosenthal, to try and get some, something in writing back that will give us an indication of what the value she would like to seek for that property. And so, the two action items are just essentially who's gonna represent, and how do you want to whittle down the list of choices, was the other option, too. How do you want to whittle down all of the alternatives and options that have been proposed at Ms. Gould's meeting in the past, so?
Let me ask you something. I've punched my button. So, you need some guidance from the board, Mr. Rodriguez, on mediation representatives, correct?
Mediation representative is one.
I followed you there.
Okay.
And then, I didn't, I'm not sure I followed you on the next two, on, do you need guidance on who will be designated on BEC property accommodation negotiations?
Yes, that, and the component dealing with the alternate site. I assume we're gonna hold those meetings in tandem. They had suggested some arrangement where they have someone attend one meeting, and someone, we're not, I don't know that that was the pleasure of this board. You may just send one or two representatives to those. But the reality is, is someone is going, outside of the mediation process, someone is going to have to represent the board, and it doesn't have to be a school board member at that point. If you delegate staff, then it'll be staff. It's whatever the pleasure of this board is, but you need to give us some direction. And the third component is, I think the superintendent would ask for some guidance. I know that we would ask for some guidance from legal in whittling down the list of potential alternatives, whether it's we'll flip the location of the track, or the football stadium, or what have you. There's a whole list of items that you're aware of that have been proposed in the past. There have been some costs attached to those, and we continue to research those. My suggestion there is just simply having a publicly noticed meeting, and any board members that can attend one afternoon in the next, you know, few days, if not probably Monday of next week, or Friday of this week, whatever works for staff and works for the board, that we can get the board as quickly together. But only those that are interested in attending would have to attend that, instead of having to do it in this forum, where, you know, you may have members that don't want to participate in that sort of selection process.
Okay. Well, you know, I'll lead us off and weigh in on each of those. You know, insofar as mediation goes, you know, if the board would indulge me, I very much want to be at the mediation. It's what I do for a living, very candidly. I've been hip-deep in this issue. If Ms. Gould, her district also would like to attend, I don't have an issue with us having to notice it in the sunshine, because if it's a typical mediation at some point, we're gonna be split into separate rooms, and I'm hoping we get a good mediator who really uses his or her skills. For me personally, as far as the BEC property accommodations, and who takes the lead on that discussion, I'm very comfortable with Ms. Gould taking the lead on that. It's her district. I think she's worked it masterfully with the public on the BEC property accommodations. You know, and I'd love to hear what the rest of the board thinks. But, you know, on the north of Albert's evaluation, you know, I don't have a hard feeling on that, so I want to hear what the rest of the board thinks. But, you know, frankly, I think we're at a point in that evaluation where I am extremely comfortable with our staff taking the lead in that, with county staff. To me, the most encouraging aspect of the joint meeting was, and I may be reading too much into it, but my perception was county commission empowering county staff to take a good, hard look at north of Albert's. We've always empowered our staff to take a good, hard look at it. But for me personally, on north of Albert's, I need to start getting good, hard numbers, and start really understanding feasibility, and timelines, and all that, which frankly is beyond my ken. I think I would need to have our real estate facilities people, legal team really leading that, although frankly, if a board member wants to go to that and participate, I don't have an issue. Ms. Cadel?
Couple of things. I am very happy to have you be the lead mediator. You are the chairman of the board. I do understand that Ms. Gould does have a dog in the fight, and I think it's very appropriate for her to be there. So, I have no problem with that. I have no problem with staff being the one who leads all of the investigation into the north Albert's property. One of the things that has bothered me since we left there Tuesday night, and I just need to say it publicly, there was a comment made that you can sell that property, and you get that money, the BEC property. We've spent $8 million. We were told that there, it's like, I can't remember now. I want to say it's either 56 or 65 one-acre thing, one-acre lots. So, if the zoning doesn't change on it, there's only so much money you can get for one-acre lots. So, whatever we get from it, we, it's not like we found 10 million, or 12 million, or 13, whatever it is, you gotta take that $8 million away. So, say that you sold it for $10 million. We've only really gained $2 million of taxpayer money, because you've got to take the cost of that property. And that has kind of bothered me since the end of the meeting, and so I just need the record to reflect that there has been some cost expended, and that was a pot of money that we have for construction. So, yes, we could make a profit on the property, but what we sell it for is not the total profit. So, I just, that has bothered me since we left there last week. The other thing is, I've thought about this long and hard, about what conditions we're willing to say that we're going to do. And I'm wondering if, instead of looking at what conditions, I'm wondering if we can come up with a dollar amount that we are willing to spend over and above for special conditions, like, I don't know, just pick a number, 2 million, 3 million, whatever it is. Because that $2 or $3 million in special conditions, when you look at the pot of money, it's being taken away from somebody's school. So, how much money are we willing to spend on any enhancements that we have for the site? So, you know, I would like, you know, I would like us to figure out what that number is. And, you know, maybe we need the help of staff to come in and say, you know, here are some numbers, between this number and that number, whatever it is, to say, you know, we can make some adjustments, but here's the pot of money, and let's prioritize with that pot of money, what can we do? Because in one of the schools that I represent, or I used to represent, they wanted, I don't, I can't remember what it's called, a cornice or something, that's on the top of the building, so that it fit in with the neighborhood. And we told them that would be fine, but the development paid for it. You know, it never went into our contract, it never, we allowed, we allowed for it to happen. When the tilt wall panels were poured, that architectural strip of whatever it's called, was poured in there. But the development wrote a check directly to the construction company, because it wasn't something that we normally do. And so, while I understand this is a special situation, just about every neighborhood where we're gonna go from now on to build a school is going to have some sort of special situation. So, you know, I just, I'm not comfortable having an open checkbook saying, you know, we're gonna do X number. I think we, just like you have to budget at home, I think we say, this is what we're willing to spend extra for this site. Now, what can we do for that?
Ms. Gould?
As you pointed out, I do want to be in all places and all conversations, so there's no doubt. And I have appreciated the support, and you being knee-deep in this, but, you know, I think that I get the continuum input from the community. And I'm happy to say that I've learned from both sides, that the community is sitting down and talking with each other. I heard it tonight from the folks in the audience, as well as some of our parents, and they're, and they're talking about this. So, I think last week even helped with that. And I, and I do agree that we should not have a blank checkbook. I think, though, this is a holistic issue, and I want us to keep the eye on the ball of 2017. And what I mean by a holistic issue is, I don't know until we really determine what the north of Albert's, or any other site that may come forth as a potential option would cost, if we really know the value of what we'd be willing to invest here, if we get the opportunity to invest it at the BEC 535 site. So, in other words, if, if we say that we're not gonna go more than $3 million over budget on this site, and we put a arbitrary number on that, and we, I don't know, get faced with a choice, which would, boy, we don't really feel like we have any choices right now, but imagine if we had choices. I don't think we're gonna, you know, want to spend $10 million over on another site. So, I think it's a holistic approach. We gotta know what the cost of all things are, as we're putting things in the hopper, before we limit our options too much. That said, we always have to consider our fiduciary responsibility, our, the equity to our community, and being very conscious of our taxpayers' investment in our kids. So, I, I think figuring out that budget is a great idea, but I think we need all of the data in the hopper in order to figure out what that budget really would be for investment. So, I would love to see us move forward, and move forward very swiftly. While I agree that the staff should take the lead with the county staff, because they have the resources at their fingertips, I do think that we need to use all the resources in the community to expedite this. And if there are, you know, if we look at north of Albert's, we know that the developers, we would need to ask the developers to help with some of the road costs, or the county would. How do we make sure that everybody is getting that input, so that there are no delays, and we can speed it up? And that's the only thing that I want to be cautious of, is that, that nothing kind of stands in the way of the bullet train at this point, so that we can make, by the end of this year, know exactly what path we're on, so that we can have our school by 2017. That's my mantra, 2017.
Thank you. Mr. Roach? Mrs. Gordon?
Yes, thank you. I know that's the motto, but, oh, okay. Where am I? Mr. Chairman, this question is directed, I think, to general counsel. How many, how many members are there from the county commission that you're thinking about with the mediation representation?
Ms. Gordon, we have no idea at this point.
Okay. Well, I don't want us going shorthanded, and I think you heard me. I really, I'm volunteering myself, because just like, I know it's, it's not, we're not at the point now where, you know, what community it is. We're at the point where we're at litigation. And, I mean, you cannot be, you know, we already held hands. That didn't work. I pretty much got bumped in my chest at the school, you know, by one person, because he felt that we should have, no one should have said anything, and just let it go. And I have got, you know, all of us have got to see to it that there is some type of talking and negotiation. We're just not just holding hands anymore. And I don't, you know, you said it's complicated. I beg to disagree with you on that portion. There's nothing complicated about posting. And then, and it's not complicated when you don't know how many are going to be on the side. I'm going to be there, if I'm at the door, just listening, you know. I'm gonna have to be there, because I need to know what they're thinking, because you don't ever know what they're thinking. And I still can't see how we could go in there and demand from the Orange County government, how we tell them how to build roads in school by 2017. It's just not going to work. You don't know what they're gonna do behind closed doors. You don't know what may come up. You don't know what the budget will be. How can we regulate this? What will the budget be for them, that we can tell them, okay, all right, we got the site, we're gonna go over here, you're gonna see to it that they build the roads? What if it falls through, like all of the builders that have come to us and promised to build schools in our community, did not get them built because of either the economy? And you can't stop that. What if something happened to the economy? We're in the middle of electing a new president. We're in the middle of electing a new governor for the state. You have no idea what can happen to the economy. I've been through it, and I've seen what happened when builders have I've been through it, and I've seen what happened when builders have come before us and promised us roads, they promised us schools, and then we end up getting the bill. And some board members up here know exactly what I'm talking about. So I don't see how we could go in and legislate anything at Orange County government and tell them, we want this, if we do this, and we hold hands and da la la and sing our song, that we're going to have the school built. That's a great thing. I think we all want it built, but this thing where no cause has just really gotten to me. I'd like to know what they're going to say. I'm at the point where I would wait and see what the judge has to say, because the judges, the three judges would have to say, but how are you going to keep me out of the meeting?
That's not my intention.
I know that, but I'm just asking, because we haven't said how many. Of course, the chairman has to be there. If nobody else has to be there, the chairman has to be there. Then out of respect that we've established at this board, we generally respect the person whose area it is to allow them, but however, in past, Mr. Roach and I have said on this board that sometime the person who area got represented, y'all speak for us sometime, and we don't want you speaking for us sometime. Some things that you mentioned in pre-planning, I'm sitting up there and I wrote it down, I'm going, well, when did they decide that? No one said anything to me about that yet. And that was said in pre-agenda meeting. So what I'm saying is, all of a sudden, we're so respectful of this one community and that one community, when I've seen decisions made at this board without consulting anybody on this board other than bringing it to the table as an agenda. Yes, in respect, Ms. Pam Gould should be there, but Ms. Pam Gould is at the stage now where she has a discombobulated community, and she hasn't taken any sides. Because it's discombobulated. They are battling, and that's why we are battling. Somebody got to make a stand somewhere, and it looks like it's going to be the judge. So the la da la, I call it the la da la, you know, where y'all singing "Come By Ya" and holding hands and going in the back room, I'd like to know what's going to be established by that. How are we going to come out any better than what we did in the meeting that we had? Unless we are all at the table. I say all at the table. Are those who could be at the table, what makes you think you could be any stronger than all of us? We're no stronger than the eight of us. And you need a lot of strength right now. You need it, you're going to be grayer than me by the time, you know, you said one year, you know, and I was teased, Pam, you know, it took me 14 to get like this. And that's why I don't change my picture, because I want everybody to see what this board has done to me, and I love every moment of it. I love it. I love every moment of it, because this is what I live, I live this. Okay, because this is what I know my service is. But I feel that the stronger the board, with our chairman leading, and I love you, Pam, with all the outside resources, I have seen, I have got to take a comment from Ms. Flynn that she made. I give our staff the utmost respect. I see no other community in the nation, and every single one of us have traveled all over the world. I don't see another school district in the nation that have the facilities that we have. They have never built anything like what we have. So they can give us opportunities, they can give us suggestions, but they haven't built it. And until they have built it, and until they have been in the fight, I think our staff is very capable of handling this, and our chairman leading us, and that is why we have a county chair, so that he can lead us, and you fighting for your community, and we're behind you, but whatever way that would be best for the children of Orange County, Florida. So that's it. And I would like to put myself on the committee, I'll put myself in the place whenever I could be there. But y'all can't go there without me. You're going to need me.
Ms. Moore.
I'm sorry to have to go after you, Mrs. Gordon. Anyway, I'm not sure, Mr. Rodriguez, and I think this was asked, if you have any indication of what method the county commission is going to prefer for this meeting. I know from conversations with individual commissioners that they have tended to prefer dealing with board members. And so I know I feel more comfortable to have staff there, but I've had indications that they prefer to deal with our board members. So do you have a recommendation in terms of, maybe Mr. Sublett could be our one mediator when we were in the other room to come back in case, you know, there was some novel proposal or solution settlement on the table that we're all sitting in another room just willing to tell them, yeah, that's great, or no, so that we could render some sort of verdict right then and there? But maybe you could tell me what they're thinking?
I don't think they've, first of all, they have a board meeting this evening, so I don't know if this was also a source of discussion over there or not. I do know that our two staffs, like I mentioned before, will continue to have dialogue. But obviously, everything has to come back to both boards for further approval and so Ms. Moore, I frankly don't know. I'm not getting any direction at this point, and the closest thing we've received is just the memorandum from Commissioner Boyd. But there's been no other communication from their legal department or from Mr. Testament or the others there as to what their process will look like. I think for the mediation, we will come up with whatever approach to protect your confidentiality in that process, albeit an executive session or something, there has to be. This is not the first time two entities have had to engage in a joint mediation, and it may very well be exempt, we just have not uncovered that rock yet. But there has to be some protection in the mediation process, because otherwise, you could just have someone sitting there as you're trying to deliberate as a body, three, two, whatever number it is, in excess of one, and then someone from the public just runs to the other side and says, this is what they're really looking for. That would defeat the whole process of mediation of going back and forth. So we will carefully craft a process that will protect the integrity of the mediation process as well as making sure that, you know, your rights are there, and Ms. Gordon's rights, and everyone else's rights on this board. But I don't have an answer for you as to what they're thinking of doing.
Well, it's just my opinion that I think it's important that we all attend, and that we encourage there and to higher commission to attend, whether we're sequestered or whatever, because there certainly was a diversity of opinion on that commission. And I'm sad to say this, but I did not feel that their commissioners came to the table as well-prepared as their staff or this board. And I thought that was a hindrance to good negotiations, because all of us have driven out multiple times, I mean, we have studied this issue backwards and forwards for years. So whatever, we talk to them, I hope that we can get more engagement from more of their commissioners, since they all have to vote, and that they're engaged and involved, because I felt like a lot of them are continually to learn things for the first time when they're dealing directly with us. I just don't feel like their staff is preparing them as well as our staff is. And then another completely different issue, of course, with regard to West Orange, that I've been pondering, Mr. Rodriguez, is this whole cost notion. And I didn't know, I don't necessarily find that these costs are all that subjective if we have hired cost estimators, since my understanding that CMI does cost estimating for the county commission as well. So I'm not quite sure why we're getting so much pushback from the other side with regard to our costs, when this is a reputable company that is utilized by both bodies. But I want to ask you, Mr. Rodriguez, of course, we shouldn't be, and if we can't get into strategies in terms of the lawsuit, I've never had a problem with having additional cost estimators. But what I don't like is people just throwing numbers out based on this, that, or the other. It has to be an expert, right? Mr. Sublett knows this well, you know, you have expert witnesses at a trial. And so just because I think that road should cost $5 million, and you think it should cost $20 million, it's not admissible, it has to be with experts. And so my hope is that when we go in, I think we have, but for some reason, they're contesting our figures. So that is maybe for you, Mr. Sublett, or Mr. Rodriguez, is there anything we need to do in terms of bringing to finality the figures so that we can stand on them more securely?
Okay, can I make one comment before I turn it over to you, Mr. Rodriguez? One of the, and I'd like to hear if board members heard it differently, one of the very encouraging other things I heard come out of that joint meeting, and I actually found a lot that was encouraging that came out of that joint meeting, primarily that we got it down to two options back in North of Alberts. I think that's a giant accomplishment. We didn't debate any other sites really for the entire four hours that we were in there. But I didn't hear a lot of disagreement from county commissioners or staff on the cost. Did they? Okay, well, I may have been selected. Okay, well, then I withdraw that. All right, Mr. Rodriguez, let me turn it over to you then. I didn't recall that, so I must be mistaken.
Yeah, Ms. Moore, I think it's the cost that we have done is, as best as I can ever entail, is just document everything, just like you said, and putting people whose reputations are going to stand behind those numbers, because that's their function and that's their role. And again, I can just clearly and unequivocally say, we do not give direction to our experts to say, we need low numbers or we need high numbers. We just tell them, we need the best numbers you can to approximate what our future expenditures will be. One of the, you know, changes that was alleged was how much it would cost to purchase the property from Ms. Peñón, because she had represented different things to the mayor. Well, that was new information to us, we had heard rumors, but I couldn't confirm it. And immediately after that meeting, we sent her something in writing saying, we want to get it in writing, because she's the only one that can project. We do have the appraised estimate of what she thought it was worth at the time in October of 2012, and it was just as to the 26 parcels, and at that time, she thought it would be worth $175,000 an acre. So that is my estimate that I have from her at the time. But if those numbers change, we obviously can update the matrix, we can revise it and continue to work on those. But I have pretty good confidence that, you know, when we're asking folks to give us CMI, our folks that are coming up with the projected cost for the acquisition of property, that's based on empirical costs when we acquire other parcels. So those numbers are going to be pretty much close to the ballpark. When you ask Mr. Marchena how much litigation costs, you have to trust Mr. Marchena is going to give you a solid number and not low-ball it or increase it or anything else. So we just have to trust our experts and just document which is what we've done.
Ms. Moore.
Well, I appreciate that, and I think most of us have a confidence of the numbers. And, you know, we've heard that folks from the company come, and we've dealt with them before, we have somewhat of a confidence. But for some reason, it just didn't seem like the community and the commissioners had a confidence in those figures. So maybe you can explain, you know, I'm not an attorney, is there any better way to do that? Because for me, and, you know, we even had the Orlando Sentinel weigh in here on one very significant point, is how much is this county commission going to force this school district and the taxpayers to spend on another property? And as Mrs. Flynn said eloquently the other night, what school is going to be lost because of that? And so all of that comes back to the foundation of the believability of these figures. And so I've been on a personal quest to understand, I've studied, I've been working on that myself personally. And so maybe you could just follow to that, because it's not some, I know you trust it, I have a better trust in it after doing my homework, but what about the community and those commissioners?
Yeah. Ms. Gould.
I just wanted to chime in here, because I think we have three tasks in front of us right now, is based on what, Mr. Rodriguez. And one of those tasks is, if we're going to look at the cost estimates of North of Alberts, what now can we do with those cost estimates, knowing they take into account a lot of variables? Because until you get into a project, you don't really know what you can narrow those variables down to, and what can be negotiated in those things. And the same on the 535 site, on the Beck site. We have to look at what accommodations would make that even remotely palatable with the county and the community, we can't leave them out of this discussion, because that's who we serve, that's whose tax dollars we're responsible for. We need to be the most prudent with those. So I think there's three tests. The mitigation, which I think that's pretty clear, that's going to have to come out of a negotiated, whatever, Mr. Rodriguez and the county attorney decide, you know, whether there's two of us, all of us, you know, however that works. But these other two tasks need to happen fairly immediately, and if we have any hope of settling on a site, I think negotiation is really the only guaranteed thing that will settle a site. Litigation has a huge risk to me. And something you said, Mrs. Gordon, is what if things fall through? And I, for one, do not want to risk all my eggs in one basket at all. So I want to make sure that we fully vet all of these three buckets of activity through our mitigation, our accommodations for 535, and what's realistic, what's palatable and budgetable, what might work better for the community if that site is negotiated, and then what could, because now we can go out and talk with people and say, hey, you know, could you donate some land, could you do this, what are the real costs, is that site really as bad as we think or as good as we think? There's one thing, when you're looking at something at a 50,000-foot level, there's another thing when you actually go walk the site, take a look at it, and find out what your real obstacles, challenges, or opportunities are on a site. And that's true for any of the sites that we have on that matrix. That 50,000-foot level is one thing, but I think what we need to do is get in there and get a little dirty with each of those areas and just get some conversation going. And that's from both sides, except for maybe the, I mean, the mitigation will be with both sides. But I think that's where our subcommittee kind of groups that can come to the table, and it gives us really an opportunity then to talk with either the county commissioners if they want to, because it sounded like several of them wanted to have some further conversations. That might be that pathway for conversation on the accommodation in the North of Albert site in particular. So I would love to hold an accommodations meeting as soon as possible to really look at that list. I know that the staff has started to put some costs to that, and maybe even as early as this Friday, if we could arrange that, Mr. Rodriguez, for as early as this Friday afternoon, and at least get that part of the conversation going, so that we know at least the parameters of what we're talking about for 535 that we can offer up. Because right now, it's been sort of subjective and suggestive and not firm. And I think we need to firm up that list and know what our boundaries are so that we can have real negotiation on that.
Since part of the question was directed at me, I do agree, though, completely with your fundamental premise, Ms. Moore, which is, to use Mr. Rodriguez's words, we need empirical data on all costs. And by empirical data, I mean objective data from either county consultants and/or school district consultants. Because I think one thing that is, that I've been struggling with in this debate is, this person said we could build this cheaper, or this person said we could build that cheaper. And my fundamental nightmare with this potential school is that I really don't want to be the school board member who looks back in four years and ended up building a $130 million high school or a $140 million high school because we didn't get good hard empirical data. So we've got to, at some point, figure out, are we going to trust our consultants? And I think we have to, when they give us the numbers, regardless... When they give us the numbers, regardless what outside influences are telling us those numbers are going to be. And if outside influences are going to tell us what those numbers are going to be, and I don't, I know how you do this, frankly, I don't think it's possible, then I think we need to get those numbers told us by outside influences, whether, let's just say, Ms. Peñoni and her track, as Mr. Rodriguez is doing in writing, in some sort of legally enforceable agreement. So, if she comes in and says, "No, we can sell you the property for $75,000," well, put it in an option contract, Fran, and then, and give it to us in something that's legally enforceable and go a step further and, you know, I don't need a lawyer from the lectern up here, but, you know, go a step further and give us, you know, a consent judgment for us to purchase that property at that amount if, you know, so there's no wiggling out of it. Ms. Flynn.
Thank you. I have notes all over here. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I wanted to say, my impression was of that night last Tuesday was that there were at least two members on, on the board, on the commission, that when I say question, their comments were, "I don't know if we have the information. Are those numbers? Where did they come from?" Because I think I answered. So, so to me, that was questioning our figures. I don't think the commissioners actually had time to look at the figures that we had because what I have found out, doing a little bit of research on my own, CMI, which did preliminary cost projections on what the property would take to prepare it, correct? Am I, am I on the right track? It's the same consulting firm that is being used at the Airport Authority, is at the convention center. So, the county is using this same group. So, to me, I think the commissioners didn't have all the information. I mean, if you look at the credentials of this group, my goodness, they're, they're very impressive. So, so I just wanted to put it out there that we have given very, in my eyes, I mean, unless there's been a huge, you know, fluke, I mean, we have one of the premier groups giving us, in the county, given us cost estimation. So, I'd want to know, what additional cost are we looking at? Is it just because in the North of Alberts, the cost of the property was in flux? You know, we had the, the owner there saying, "Oh, you know, I would, I would give different estimates." So, so I'd like for the attorney or Mr. Morris or whatever to say, "What other cost are we going to provide? Because are we going to pay now again to get those cost figures? We've already paid once. So, are we going to pay again?" So, so I just wanted to say that, what kind of other cost are we going to give? In regard to the accommodations, I think I've always said this, I know the superintendent knows that I feel this way, and, you know, she's talked me off a cliff a little bit. But I have to tell you that I will be looking with a very jealous eye as far as what we give to this one community that we won't be giving to another. So, I want to say, if it works out that we save $20 million so that I can get a relief school built, I will be open to it. But I will be looking at it with a very jealous eye because I have very passionate groups in my community that read the news and see what other people are getting, that don't like black-coated chain-linked fences, you know, that want what others. So, I just want, I just want to put that on the table. So, also, when we look at both sites, this is in response to the letter that Commissioner Boyd sent to his fellow commissioners and the mayor and CC'd on us. But I would, I want both sites to be reviewed with the same process. I don't want, want one to be reviewed by a different entity and another one to be reviewed with a different kind of set of eyes. I want them both reviewed the same way. And also, this is a question for Ms. Gould. You mentioned using outside resources. I'm, I'm a little bit confused about what those other resources would be. So, I would ask if you could talk about that. But that's what I'm looking at. My question is, what are, what are the costs that we're going to resubmit? And how much is that going to cost us to resubmit? Because we've already used one of the premier, I don't even know what you would call them, consultants. I want to put out there, I'll be looking with a jealous eye, and also, just, just to clarify what you talked about with additional resources. Thank you.
Ms. Gould.
For example, if the North of Alberts site, if part of that site is uneven, and we know there's a developer down the street moving dirt, can we negotiate a deal with them because they have excess dirt? That is part of that piece that, you know, I may know, Commissioner Boyd may know, our facilities people might know, but the consultant might know.
Can I jump in right, so along those lines? Here's the other thing that I think. I think our building process, because we have to follow certain regulations because we're a government entity, is different than if my husband and I go out there and decide to build a development. So, so I think that has to be clarified in regard to our resources because I don't think we can wheel and deal that freely.
Right. But if they had excess dirt and we needed dirt and they wanted to donate it, I think we can take a donation of dirt. So, it's not, it's not subcontracting to them. That's what I'm saying. And, and they came to the table with the county and gave us a letter via the county that they were willing to put money in for the road so that obstacle could get pushed out of the way. So, it's more of us being aware of what's happening on that halo effect.
And I think we would have, I would have to know, or we would have to know what the process is for that kind of thing. I mean, from, from what I've seen since being on the board, the bid process, that whole putting it together is very prescriptive in what has to be submitted. So, I guess that question would go back to the facilities director and to our chief operating officer when it comes to how we actually
What the parameters are, right.
What the parameters are of, of putting together a bid or bid or a proposal or, yeah, a project to be out there. Okay. Thank you.
Mrs. Gordon.
This is another question to the general counsel. Okay. Help me with this, please. And I really don't want to request, you know, more meetings, anything. Okay. But I'm worried about our governance as we break ourselves down to accommodate and make for peaceful meetings. Number one, I'm worried about, you know, we have the chairman. Okay. We definitely have the chairman. But generally, the chairman speaks, he can speak individually and letting people know that he's speaking as an individual. But when he speaks for the board, he has to get consensus from the board. We cannot arm him to go into that meeting free like we did the last time. What we did in West Orange, we were all speaking as individuals based on information that we had. None of us had consensus on what we wanted, you know, we went in open, we went in with information from. So, we're walking a thin line here. When you begin to tell me about who will speak and what they will say, they cannot speak for the board unless we have sent them in to speak for the board on that topic. And it has to be consensus. So, you got a problem there, our general counsel, because you have not really gotten with us and informed us as to what procedure. So, I know we're going to have to get together because we have got to be able to arm our main voice speaker, okay, which is the chair. But the chair can only speak for himself individually unless he's directed by the other seven and agreed upon with his vote that he's speaking for the board. So, when you're going into a mediation of this sort, he has got to have some kind of power behind him. But if you send him in and you got a discombobulated board and you only have two voices, you're already violating. And you're violating sunshine in a way for the fact, I mean, you could post it and that'll take care of it, and then we could sit there. But how can we, now, I'm going to give an example. When I served on the bargaining teams in Orange and Osceola, there was, we had, we did mediation, and that's one of my area of expertise too, Mr. Chairman. We did quite a bit of mediation. But how we did it, we did breaks. But we had a meeting before the meeting. And that meeting before the meeting directed the chair as to what can and cannot be said on behalf of the board. And then, in a meeting of this sort, the chair can voice his personal opinion. The representative from that community, from the board can also definitely voice her personal opinion because she has to. She's speaking for that community. They're looking for her to represent them, okay? And she has to have some kind of side there because she's going to have to speak in behalf of that community. So, our concern here at this board table is, we have got to get together as a board to give him the power that he needs because he just can't speak off the cuff. It has to be something that we agreed upon. Now, in another mediation, we did break sessions. If there was something that we needed to pull our chairperson in to talk about, then just like we did the break, then we went in and we got in session. All of it was posted. We got in session and we said, "No, they're hammering at this." Because, see, the type of mediation we're getting ready to do, you don't know which way they're going to hammer. They don't know which way we're going to hammer. So, when you're going in there not knowing, we don't know their side, they have a little bit of idea about our side, how, how can you deal with that? So, I want to put this out for you as our general counsel to let you know you have more at stake. You, you got to have a consensus in order for that chairman to speak in behalf of the board. And it doesn't do him any good to go in there and speak as an individual. That's going to weaken it. Can you inquire about the process? Can there be observers sitting in the back? So, if our chairman did not, we did not agree with what our chairman said, or we did agree and say, "Go forward," how can that be handled? And see, from the type of negotiation you're talking about, I don't feel we would have that right. So, what power are you really giving the chair?
Mr. Rodriguez.
Ms. Gordon, again, to the, to the best of my ability here, I have never participated in a mediation with two public officials on the same side having to negotiate. So, let me start with that preface. But I think the
No, 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 no. We're not talking about two public officials on the same side. It cannot be, we already said tonight, the board, it's the board. There's no such thing as separating us.
Well, let me clarify, when it's two or more, because whether, whether eight of you show up or two of you show up, that creates a different dynamic. I think the, the approach that we will probably have to take is that we will set up an executive session.
That's what I'm asking.
And in that executive session, you will meet, there will be a court reporter present, you will have deliberations on what settlement strategies. You will then direct an individual, whether it's your chair
That's it.
Or what have you. And then that person then has to step out of the room. You will recess that executive session. That individual would then go into the caucus, what it's referred as the caucus of mediation. And in that mediation process, there would be, and by the way, it doesn't have to be the, the chairman. You can designate the superintendent, you can designate someone else. You have to designate someone. But either way, someone will have to leave the room, then communicate whatever it is you wish to have communicated in the mediation process, which also has its own form of confidentiality. Keep in mind, anything discussed in the mediation cannot then subsequently be used in litigation. So, that's what I envisioned, Ms. Gordon, is that a representative will leave, participate in the mediation, and then that person would have to come back and report back, and you would reconvene the executive session. The court reporter would continue to take minutes as required by law. But that's about the only thing I can think of, and I will be researching this. I've already tasked Ms. Fernandez and myself with figuring out how this is done and other, really any other governmental entity has to be involved in this process, short of having, you know, only one representative, there's got to be another way to do it. So, we will figure it out. That's what I'm saying. We will figure it out.
Well, that, those were the points that I noted, and I did not know if you were aware that that would have to take place. And as you stated, there were times when the previous superintendent spoke, and then there were times when, when the board did speak. But, you know, our chairman did say that he is well versed in the, in the mediation thing also, so I don't think that's a problem. But that's the type of thing that I want, you know, you to beware of, that is going to have to happen before any of this takes place. And that was my point. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Gordon. Ms. Cadel.
I keep hearing Ms. Gould say, "The goal is 2017. At some time, we need to fish and cut bait." I think that's it, or cut bait and fish, cut bait and fish, I guess it is. We need to, we need to figure out at what point do, does all of this, bringing experts back in. We need to figure out exactly where we're going, how we're going to do it. And it appears to me that we have a deadline of a certain number of days, and then a certain number of days, and then a certain number of days. I think there are many of us that can tell real-life experiences of times that we have looked to outside, outside sources to help us build something. And we can go back to Hurricane Charlie with Ms. Flynn's North Lake Park, and the only staircase in the entire district that had a problem happened to be at North Lake Park. You know, we made some developer agreements back when we were really, really hard-pressed for having sites. Then this board had to figure out, how many buildings at Lake Nona High School do you build? Because back then, it looked like we were going to need the whole school. And in actuality, when the developer agreement said we needed the whole school, there weren't enough children out there yet. Am I misstating anything?
No, you're right.
Okay. Just checking. You know, and there's, one time, we let someone build a middle school for us. But then we paid more for the concrete, is my understanding, is we didn't, we would have maybe paid less for the school if we had used our process of contracting. And the one thing I have discovered in the past about six or seven weeks, years ago, everywhere I went, people were complaining about our facilities department. Didn't matter who it was, where it was, somebody had a horror story to tell. Every place I go, without asking, without prodding them, saying, "Well, how are we doing?" or whatever, they talk about the job that Mr. Morris and his team is doing right now and that, you know, we are, we are putting best practices into play. So, we are where we are today with a facilities department that's different, with a legal team that we have now hired in-house, which for a long time, we didn't have in-house legal counsel, and we didn't have people who look at real estate, and we didn't have people who, you know, we didn't have an attorney that was going to help us get through the procurement process. So, we have made great strides. And we are at a point right now, we have to start making some decisions and we have to start moving forward. I understand that we need to figure out what those concessions are. You know, I, I also would like us to get to a point, and I think maybe there's another conversation coming, at what point do we stop looking at alternative sites and say, "It's this site, and it's that site, and these are off the table." And we are at a time where, and, I mean, basically, the letter that Commissioner Boyd sent to us said, "Let's talk about North of Alberts and let's talk about Beck." And at some point, we need to say, "Okay, that's it. Tiny Road's off. Any of this other stuff is off. Let's look at these two sites, figure out which one we can deliver on time, use the most effective use of taxpayer money, try to negotiate that settlement. If we can't negotiate the settlement, let's go to the court. We have these two options." But at some point, we need to stop chasing, "Well, maybe it's this site, or maybe it's that site, or maybe it's that site." Because we've been chasing sites for a while, and we've waited patiently for the matrix that And we've waited patiently for the matrix that Ms. Gould asked for, and we've gotten the matrix. At some point, we need to say, this is one site, this is the other site, and everything else is off the table. When we talk about road construction, when we built Eastlake Elementary School, when we started that, Tanner Road was a dirt road. And the county told us that that road would be open, that road would be completed to open that school. And then what happened was, the road company that was hired to put that road in went belly up and walked away, so then it went to a bond. And so the surety bond had to step in. The county called me to a meeting and said, we're not going to be able to deliver the road on time. And I'm like, excuse me? It ended up, I ended up having 900 children going into a school that was built for 672 children or whatever, because there was huge growth going on back behind UCF, and this school, this Eastlake serves that community when it was exploding. And we had, we had at least 600 children who were supposed to be going to that school that ended up to be 900, and I'm called over to the county to be told, you know, the people went belly up, we're going to have to go through the surety bond process, we're not going to have the road ready. Well, if we put a whole lot of, well, you know, because it's my understanding, and if I'm wrong, north of Alberts is pretty close to Sunset Park, and all we have heard is about traffic issues at Sunset Park. I mean, Mrs. Gould, with all due respect, I think from the time you sat down in this chair, there have been comments about, it's one road, this road was supposed to happen, it didn't, I don't know if it's the developers, you know, I don't know why the road didn't happen. So now, it looks like we've got north of Alberts, we've got the Beck property, and north of Alberts needs a road, and it needs to be delivered on time to open a high school. So at some point, we need to say, okay, we're moving forward, here are the two sites, we're going to do the very best due diligence that we can do, and here's what it looks like. And so, that's it.
Thank you, Ms. Cadel. I've punched my button, and I'll tick through these really very, very quickly. Mr. Rodriguez, from what I'm hearing from the board, I don't know if, how we would approach a county on this, but it seems to me more and more that maybe we could enter into some kind of conversation between your legal staff and their legal staff on agreeing by mutual consent to which consultants will be used to estimate cost. Because that would be, frankly, I think, a good solution, that if we can mutually agree to CMI or whomever. And they may not like CMI, but at some point, if we're really going to have empirical data, we have to have numbers that we both buy off on. Now, if they don't go for that, you know, it takes two to tango. If they don't go for that, then I think we have to go forward with our own consultants. But just food for thought, and I'm going to go to you after this, you can weigh in on all these. That's point number one. Point number two is, I think you're researching this already, but, and you've already said this, I probably don't need to be redundant, but government in the sunshine, I always thought there was an exception for matters in litigation and settlement discussions in particular, so I just hope we look into that very thoroughly. That would solve really a lot of the issues that some of the board has concerns over. You know, one thing, I just want to make a statement here, one thing that's sort of lost in the discussion, and I don't think there's any value to what I'm about to say other than it's stating the obvious, you know, north of Alberts is not in the middle of nowhere. So, you know, I see a lot of y'all nodding your heads, you know, we've got dozens upon dozens of neighbors around there as well. And, you know, that's an issue I hope that we weigh as we go forward. Last thing I want to say is, I agree completely with something another board member said, which is, I thought one of the most productive things, again, to come out of the joint meeting was, it seems like we're down focused to two sites, north of Alberts and the 535 site, or what we call the Beck site. I don't know if we need to formalize that, but the one thing I dread that I hope does not happen is that we get in this process and we start throwing on the table other alternative sites, because I think we're finally exhausted and we're moved past that. I got the distinct impression from the county commission that they were focused on north of Alberts and the Beck site themselves. So I think it would help Mr. Rodriguez going forward to get, and I'm looking at each of you because I'd like everybody to weigh in on this, we do need some broad consensus direction to him, that we are, if that is our sentiment, going to focus on the north of Alberts site and the Beck property site.
I'm prepared to make a motion to that effect, if you would like.
Okay. Well, let me do this. Why don't you punch your button? Let me have you tee up then, because I don't want to go ahead of other people. But those were my observations. Ms. Moore? Hold on, Ms. Moore, before I do that. Mr. Rodriguez, do you want to comment on?
Just the experts, I guess I didn't see, I mean, the disagreement over the CMI numbers are really disrelated to the tiny road site, because I think that's where I've heard the pushback. And I think on the other sites, the numbers are negligible, I mean, they're in the $3 million rate. Mayor Jacobs' concern was over the estimation of the property owned by Ms. Pignone, and we've already started to address it. So, Mr. Chairman, I just don't know that finding another alternative, I...
Well, you know, I agree, and I'm fine with that, you know, and that may develop as we go forward, if we get into this, and we've got a long way to go on this journey, but as we get into this, if we get in disagreement over the numbers. But I think that's why I didn't really hear a lot of disagreement that night. I guess I was thinking more the north of Alberts numbers, so. And, you know, if we get into the process, by the way, mediation isn't necessarily one day. Okay? We may get into mediation, and we may be in there for eight hours, and a good mediator may say, well, why don't you all, why don't we adjourn for two weeks, go back, try to develop more information, come back in two weeks? I mean, frankly, that's what I hope the mediator does in this case. We get a pit bull who doesn't let go until he exhausts all aspects of settlement. That's why we are in this process. So this concept, just so you know, that mediation is a one-day-and-done thing is not always valid. Now, again, it takes two to tango. If the county comes in there and says, no, we're going to do it in one day, and we're going to impasse after one day, you know, we can't make them not impasse. Just one side can declare impasse. But I'm hoping actually that the county will want to keep talking, and they sent that signal at our joint meeting that they wanted to talk and talk and talk until we get this resolved. So I'm hoping a good mediator can keep us talking. Did you want to add anything, Mr. Rodriguez, before I go to Ms. Moore? Okay, Ms. Moore?
So in terms of sending a mediator to this session, then do you still think Mr. Rodriguez will have to come to an executive session? And then we just have, instead of us just talking like we are now, now we're to the point where these are the specific sets of things we should set some parameters on? Like you said, motion to the fact that it's out, you know, north of Alberts and Beck, perhaps we're going to set a limit as to how much additional money we're going to spend over the cost of a typical prototype? Maybe we want to talk about that? Because really, at the end of the day, all of us are going to answer to our constituent groups about how much money this is all cost. And so that may be clearly an issue where we're going to have to talk in executive session about how much we're willing to spend. So those two points are really important to me. You know, I'm absolutely thrilled if you think that the costs on north of Alberts are not a problem, but we have to remember, it's not just Commissioner Jacobs, it's, there was two or three of them right in there that didn't have an opinion, and those are the ones I'm concerned that they fully trust those numbers. And I don't have to keep hearing, well, you know, the school board inflated those numbers. I don't want to hear that from any more commissioners. They have to be convinced that those numbers are accurate, or I don't know how we get them to come along and vote for settlement, because from what I could see that day, we still didn't have a majority of that county commission. That's why we broke. That was why Mayor Jacobs suggested we all come back. There were not, and she did not have the votes. So I think we always have to bear in mind, it's not what their staff says, it's what those individual commissioners say. So that's all I have to say.
Can I comment on that? You sort of directed it at me. Mediation is a voluntary process. It's not, in other words, the mediator cannot compel a settlement. Both sides have to. And Adam, I think we all know this, but whatever comes out of there, whether we have one of us there or eight of us there, it's got to come back before the board table, and it's got to go back before their board table. I suspect if we have five out of eight of us there, or six out of eight of us there, I doubt there's going to be five out of seven of them at the mediation, or six out of seven. I'll be shocked if there's more than two of them at the mediation. I'll be candid, I think there's going to be one of them at the mediation. That's my prediction. I think one county commissioner's going to show up at the mediation. I hope I'm wrong. I would love it if they brought three or four or five too, but I just don't think this is as pressing to them as it is to us. But I agree with you, your point. I do think that that process that Mr. Rodriguez has laid out for us, at least is, and echoed by some other board members, about getting a good, solid handle on what Beck property accommodations we can have before we go into the mediation is essential. And I'm hoping Ms. Gould will take the lead on that personally, and I think, along with the rest of the board, but, you know, it's her district. And then, you know, the north of Alberts evaluation, at least at a minimum, getting our numbers nailed down before we go in there. Those are two things that have to happen before we walk into mediation, which I hope is within four weeks or five weeks. I don't know the timing on that, but, Mr. Rodriguez, at some point. That keeps coming up, and I don't know the answer to that one, I'm asked that. Is there a deadline for when the mediation has to occur?
We need to schedule and have the mediation by three weeks from today. So that's why I'm pressing to get the mediator assigned, and then we'll have within two weeks. And that doesn't mean conclude the mediation within three weeks, but the importance for, from our perspective, from legal perspective, is, once we have checked off the mediation box, then I know, either A, the parties are close enough and we should continue the dialogue, or B, we know that we're still miles apart and we then need to proceed with litigation. I cannot go back to the courts, however, and proceed until we have exhausted all remedies, and that is the last step in the process. Now, you know, once we have the mediation of the parties say, go forth to the courts, but in the interim, we're going to continue to have dialogue, which is probably what will happen, then that's okay too. But the mediation has to be held within the next three weeks, and of course, we've got to find availability for the mediator, given, you know, I didn't know what the format was going to be until we walked in here tonight. So what I'm hearing is, an appetite for the board to participate in some type of executive session. That means, I'm going to have to find a mediator that is willing to work different hours, or maybe hours that are accommodating, or, you know, hours that, typically mediation starts bright and early at nine in the morning, or, you know, 9:30 at the latest, and then you start working through, and you work and work and work, and then you hopefully get some progress done by 6 o'clock. If we have to start mediation after hours to start going, it's going to really impact what you can get accomplished in a single day. So those are some logistical issues, those are my challenges, but we'll be working with your schedules and see what we can do.
Ms. Moore, do you queue back up again, or is that okay? Mrs. Gordon?
Mr. Sublet, on this issue, can I just ask one quick question? We keep talking about executive session. What are the rules of when executive session has to be announced? Because does it have to be announced at a regular meeting? Can it be announced at a work session, like on Thursday night? Can you announce that we're going to have an executive session on such-and-such date? How does that work?
It can be announced at any publicly announced meeting of the school board. So at the next work session, you do have one on Thursday. If, you know, I sit down and figure out this is the pattern, then we would make the announcement for when the executive session will be held. We have plenty of opportunities to do that between now and whenever it is we actually have the mediation and the executive session.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for that point of clarification.
All right, I've got Ms. Gould, then Ms. Cadel.
There are just a couple of things that I wanted to clarify, and I didn't want to be misunderstood. I am not in any way, shape, or form advocating that we turn over the construction on any site to anybody else. That's not what I'm advocating. What I am saying is, there's a lot of construction going on in West Orange County, and if we can get things donated, just as when we were buying or given the Bridgewater site, that site was completely cleared and leveled and handed over to us, so there was no expense, that we try to factor as much of those cost savings into our, both accommodations, because there may even be some ideas we have, if we can tie them back to programmatic things we could offer at that school, like an energy and an agricultural/landscaping program, that we might be able to find partners to relieve our cost on that, and also justify accommodations specific to that high school. So I want to make that clear. I am not in any way suggesting we give up or not use the experts on our staff for the guidance and fulfillment of this project. I like the idea of the mutual agreed contractors and slash vendors, if that's something they would like, because I think then, that is something we can hang our hat on and point to at all times. I do think the north of Alberts site is the absolute priority. I have a fear that we're going to find a sinkhole or something under that site. You know, what if something horrible is found on that site? I just don't want to box us in with our short timeframe if that were to happen, if we put up a motion tonight that says, we're only looking at north of Alberts forever and for more. I think we look at north of Alberts full force, but with the caveat that there are no obstacles for us, because I am not willing to put all those eggs in the litigation basket. I'm just not. And I may be in the minority on that, but I don't think that's a prudent business decision by any way, shape, or form, to think that we can predict the future in litigation. So I would never want to slam a door on, you know, the possibility, and who knows? Maybe there's a developer that fails, and there's another 65 acres exactly where we would want it if we don't succeed on 535. We just don't know. And I wouldn't want to shut that door or limit our ability if something was found on north of Alberts that we can't even predict tonight. It probably won't. I just don't want to bind the staff or any subcommittees or task force that we have in doing that. I'm not saying that's not the priority, I just want to be clear on that, that we don't box ourselves in. And let's get going on the accommodations so that we know exactly what we want to negotiate, because the negotiation for the mediation is all about 535. It's not really about the other sites. Am I correct in that? Mr. Rodriguez? The mediation is really about 535? Or is it about negotiating all sites on the table?
Mediation is about resolving the underlying lawsuit. The underlying lawsuit is...
It's 535.
Well, it's 535, but if it could entail a negotiated settlement that involves north of Alberts, it could entail anything. I mean, it's, you know, it could, maybe there's an exchange of one item or another that will satisfy them, so it's not limited to 535 in any way, shape, or form.
Okay. All right, thank you for clarifying that. So then I think that, you know, knowing both of what those subgroups need to determine is really the data we have to have in order to know what best position we're going to be in, both fiscally and the impact on the students and community. Because that's the other piece of this, that once we vet all of this out, is also going to be pretty telling. Because as Ms. Cadel said, traffic down at Overstreet is very important. There was going to be a through road, there's never been a major road planned for there. That elementary school site is on the east side of 535, instead of on the west side, and that makes it challenging no matter what, even if there is a little through road put there. So it's, we need to take all those factors, and they're going to be very telling factors for both boards to consider.
Ms. Cadel?
Listening to all of the discussion, I would like to move that OCPS eliminate from consideration as a relief high school for West Orange High School, the various tiny road sites identified in the matrix as sites 4A and 4B, and that OCPS concentrates its efforts on building a comprehensive prototype high school at either the existing Beck site, and as a possible alternative, the north of Alberts property identified in the matrix as Site 3.
Is there a second to that motion? It's been seconded by Ms. Moore. All right, discussion on that motion?
Could I say one thing? I have heard what, I have heard...
I have heard what Mrs. Gould has said. This only takes Tiny Road out of any discussion. And the reason it says a prototype high school, it takes any discussion about moving the athletic facilities away from what we build as a high school in any other neighborhood. If we get into the due diligence, and we discover that, as she has referred to, there's a sinkhole or something on it, then we, as board, can come back here and look. All I want to do is, loud and clear, Tiny Road costs too much money, there's too much unknown, and I'm sorry for any of you that did not go out to that meeting, driving on that road, in the rain, in the dark, with no lights, is very, very scary. And there are no guarantees of what that's going to look like. Yeah, there's development all around it, but if you are the parent of a high school athlete, you drive yourself to a lot of events at night, and I just, I just think it's time for us to move away from any consideration of Tiny Road.
All right, I've got Ms. Gould, then Ms. Moore.
I'm understanding your motion, I seconded you, Mrs. Cadel, that this is, the motion really is with regards to the mediation, the lawsuit, the process with the county. So if the whole thing, we end up in a lawsuit, and the judge rules against us, does your motion preclude us, down the road, having to go back and look at Tiny Road?
I'm talking about the process that we're in right now. We need to figure out where we are. Mr. Rodriguez, is there an amendment that needs to be made to the motion, that this only pertains to the current mediation, or the current situation we're in?
I mean, I guess if you want to clarify that, you can, but I mean, at any point in time, I'm sure if the board, the will of the body changes its viewpoint on Tiny Road, you guys can make a subsequent motion in the future. I don't know that that's, this is a motion just to provide guidance, is the way I interpret it, but that's up to y'all to change the, if you want to make an amendment to it, Ms. Moore, then that's up to you.
And that's what I heard from the chairman, is that we need something to clarify what we've all been talking about.
I am fine with the motion the way it was. I just wanted clarity that did not preclude that discussion from happening, you know, if that scenario I described were to take place. So I'm fine, unless another board member, you know, needs that in the motion.
Ms. Gould.
Why call that out? I mean, I don't get it. If we don't, if we don't just say, "For West Orange High School, concentrate its efforts on building a comprehensive," and I'm worried about the word "prototype" high school, either on the existing Beck site or North of Albert's, why do we have to call those other two sites out, from the current thing? That is what we're talking about? And if we say "prototype" high school, isn't there more than just a stadium in that definition? Would the vernacular get affected on recommendations that may come to change the vernacular of that school? If we put more landscaping? And, I mean, I'm a little worried about the limitation, again, boxing us in, in such a short period of time, when our end goal is to try to have a high school. So I obviously don't support this the way that it is written, because I don't want to be boxed in. I want to go forth with the intent that we have to explore North of Albert's and the Beck property to our fullest ability. I don't think we're in a position, until we know exactly where a high school is going to be in 2017, to slam the door on anything, and especially when we only have X number of days to get this done, because let me tell you, December is not far off, and we got to get into design. That's all I have to say.
All right, well, I support the motion, and, you know, we've been here a while, so I hope what I say doesn't come across as tactless. I really, truthfully, hope that it does not. But I support it, because we have worked so hard, and spent so much staff energy, on getting the eye off the ball of Tiny Road. You know, as I've observed over and over and over again, it became very apparent to me, two to three months before the county commission ever voted on November 5th, that for some forces out there playing in this issue, or involved in this issue, it was not about not building, and we're in a miracle settlement. It was not about not affecting that area. It was all about attempting to compel this board to build a school on the Tiny Road site. And at that point, we had spent literally years exploring the Tiny Road site, and I mean literally years, not figuratively. You know, a lot of folks in the community all know this, but our staff has been out there vetting the Tiny Road site for four or five years. And I think that our institution is exhausted with that, and I think we have made tremendous progress in the last three months, of finally getting our sister institution to understand clearly, unequivocally, that Tiny Road is not a viable option to this institution. Now, if we go down the path of looking at North of Albert's, and it's not a viable site, or we go down the path of the litigation, and ultimately lose before the court, and are not building on 535, nothing in this resolution precludes us from looking at other sites, whether on Overstreet Road, whether on Reams Road, whether on, I'm forgetting the other big road out there that goes east-west, a little bit north of there, but the point is, is that we cannot keep expending any more staff energy on a fruitless discussion on Tiny Road, unless this board thinks it's still in plan, a viable option. And I think we need to send that message before the mediation, that we're not looking at Tiny Road. Now, I don't, I will say this, that one of the really encouraging things about the joint meeting, is for the first time in two months, I didn't hear anybody on the county side really pushing for Tiny Road. And that was like, I'm like, you know, I actually, I keep saying there were a lot of positives to come in that joint meeting. I think the biggest positive for me was to hear leaders on the county commission saying, you know, I don't want to put words in their mouth, but implying, I think one of them actually said it, that, "Look, I realize Tiny Road's not an option, but I do want to explore North of Albert's." You know, and I thought that was tremendous progress, because we're now finally looking at, if we can't go back at other sites that are not Tiny Road. So I support the motion for that reason. Anybody else, before I call it up for a vote? Ms. Moore.
Mrs. Gould, if you would like, you know, to take that prototype, or any of those words out, you can make an amendment to the motion, and I'm happy to second you, and we'll vote. But, you know, that's how we can follow Albert's rule, so we can go through that.
I would like to do that. I would like to alter that motion, and take out the word "prototype," in case it's too limiting, and not call out Tiny Road, because I just, if we're not talking about it, let's not talk about it. If we're not talking about it, let's not talk about it. And focus on North of Albert's, and focus on working on the Beck site. So I need a little help with amending that, and I would need the motion in front of me to amend.
Let me help out as a chair. There's two issues there. I think, if I was listening carefully, what Ms. Moore was saying is strike out the word "prototype," to clarify that issue. I think if I hear you saying is you don't want the motion to rule out Tiny Road...
I wanted to say focus...
Okay, well, it's, so, do you want to make a motion to do that?
Can I see it again? Because it'll help me to say exactly what I would intend, instead of kind of talking around it. I make a motion that OCPS eliminate, no, relief high schools, I make a motion that OCPS concentrate its efforts on building comprehensive high school at either the existing Beck site, and as a possible alternative, the North of Albert property identified in the matrix as Site 3.
All right. Does everybody understand that? And Ms. Gould, I'm going to summarize, it's my role, so tell me if I'm getting it wrong. Ms. Gould has taken out the portion, has moved to amend the motion, the main motion, to take out the portion regarding Tiny Road, to purely emphasize that we're looking at North of Albert's.
And the word "prototype."
And the word "prototype."
I said "comprehensive," but "comprehensive" high school. I can do it again. I make a motion that OCPS, I'm amending the motion, thank you. I'm amending the motion, that's what I get for reading. I'm amending the motion that OCPS concentrate its efforts on building a comprehensive high school at either the existing Beck site, and as a possible alternative, North of Albert's property identified in the matrix as Site 3.
All right, did that motion...
Did I say it right?
You did. I think we all understand what the intent is, and if we need to, we can reduce it down to more detailed writing. But before we go there, is there a second to that motion? To amend the main motion? Ms. Moore?
If I'm going to second, or, so we can have discussion, my understanding is, Ms. Gould, you want to strike the word "prototype," "type," and all the language with regard to the Tiny Road sites. That's your amendment? Okay. I will be happy to second that, but not the previous. For the sake of discussion.
Okay. It's been seconded by Ms. Moore, we're on discussion now. All right, well, I'll speak to it. Personally, I oppose that, it defeats the whole purpose of the motion, which is to get the eye off the ball of Tiny Road. So I think that it's a meaningless motion, if we don't specify in the motion, and I want to make very, very clear, because I don't want there to be any confusion, from my perspective only, the primary purpose of this motion is to send the message, this institution is not looking at Tiny Road, period. So I oppose the motion to amend the main motion. Anybody else? All right, question's been called. All those in favor of, let me make sure you all understand what you're voting for. If you vote "yea," you're voting to amend the motion as moved by Ms. Gould. If you vote "nay," you're voting against amending the main motion as moved by Ms. Gould. So all those in favor of Ms. Gould's motion to amend, say "aye." All opposed, "nay." Nay. Show that motion to amend failing. All right, we're back on the main motion now. Is there any more discussion on the main motion? Question's been called. All those in favor of the main motion, please signify by saying "aye." Aye. All opposed, "nay." Show that motion passed. We all talked ourselves out. I'm Beck, anything else? Is there anything else, Mr. Rodriguez? I'm Beck, you need guidance from us on, or on the West Orange Relief High School, I should say?
Just give me a moment, please, I'm sorry. Just as a point of clarification, because I was taking notes and making sure, I know that the mediation process will pursue, and figuring out whatever the logistics are, and I think it'll be through some type of executive session. If there are interim meetings before the mediation, is my understanding correct, that our staff should continue to have that dialogue with their staff? And then, you know, we can report back as needed? And then, the third component was, it sounds like, at least from your perspective, Mr. Chair, I know what the rest of the board is, but that Ms. Gould will help sit down with staff, and sort of distill the best ideas from that list that she got in her community meeting?
Okay, let me take those up one at a time. First, and board members, shake your head if you disagree with anything I say. I think the more conversation that goes on, the better, so I would strongly encourage staff to continue conversations with staff exhaustively, as much as you can, and I actually hope those lines of communication are wide open right now. Only good can come from that, in my opinion. I did hear various board members say that they wanted to participate in that winnowing down process of the Beck accommodations. I'm not one of them, but I think we need to publicly notice those meetings, and make sure that board members are made aware of those meetings, so if any individual board members want to participate in those, they can. Ms. Gould, not that you need to hear this, I trust you to work through that, and work with staff on what are acceptable accommodations on the 535 site. And what was the third question, Mr. Rodriguez?
That was it. The two issues which you just addressed. So we'll notice the meeting for addressing the accommodations, and we will continue to work with staff on the other side, which has been an increased line of communication as of late, so we encourage that as well.
Okay. All right. Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, my report is almost done. It does not involve West Orange, and that is just to give you the update. I think you all are aware that the Renaissance application was, our appeal to the State Board of Education failed. However, we have not yet received an order. When we do receive that order, it will then provide us a trigger of 30 days to determine if we want to appeal. I'm not asking for a decision tonight, just something that I know that Ms. Roth has been covering when she was here, the reporter for the Sentinel, but we also need some direction on that. But we're not going to ask for direction tonight, because we haven't even seen the order. I know what the order's going to say, and we think our neighbors to the north in Seminole County are going to pursue an appeal, so we will also be in communications with them as to what to do if they're in fact going to pursue an appeal. And that concludes the longest legal report I've ever had to give.
Well, I will say this, we have a zoning work session coming up, so it was good practice, because I have a feeling we're going to be in that one for a long time. Okay, Dr. Jenkins.
Anything I was going to provide for a report tonight can wait. I do want to notice you a question that came up earlier, and this answer was provided to CTA president. According to DOE, the charter schools were included in that release of VAM scores. Charter schools were included in that release. I want to make you aware of that, Chairman.
Thank you. You know, it's funny about that state Board of Education meeting. I was actually worried I was going to get in trouble from Woody about my request that they defer to local decision-making. I guess I had nothing to worry about, because it was before them that day, and there was a subliminal message I was trying to convey there when I welcomed them that morning, and obviously, my eloquence is not quite what I hoped it would be that morning. Thank you. All right. I guess I didn't have to worry about getting in trouble. Communications Committee report, Ms. Moore.
I just wanted to report, we've been fairly consistent on having bimonthly meetings and following up with data on some of the major referendum issues facing this for this coming year, and we will continue to do so with meetings at 3:30 on board days. Thank you.
Thank you for your leadership on this issue. Community Action Board, Ms. Gordon.
You're not going to believe this, it's all in board docs.
All right. Ms. Gould, you had a report on your Tallahassee trip.
I did. I went up to Tallahassee with the Florida Chambers of Commerce, and it was really a great day and a half, not only the visits that I went on with Mr. Howitt, to our legislators about certain issues, but the Florida Chamber had a huge focus on talent supply and education. As a matter of fact, the center spread on their book, which was kind of nice. And they had, you know, the lieutenant governor, the governor, both presidents, and speakers of the House and the Senate come and talk about it, and they all touched education and the importance, and some of the things that are going on, but certainly, the really focusing on with businesses trying to fill the gap between education and jobs, and getting a better understanding of those career pathways. So it was great discussion. I would highly recommend, as many board members tag along on this kind of trip with the chambers as they can, because it was really an effective way to not only meet with the legislatures, with the chambers by your side, and the business owners by your side, talking about education, which was kind of cool, but also, from the perspective of really getting them, our business constituents, to understand some of the challenges to our issues, and where we have trouble overcoming hurdles, because the hurdle is elsewhere, it's not in our control. And they don't quite always get that. And this, we had a lot of discussion... And this, we had a lot of discussion about that up there. So I'll have these materials here if anybody'd like to see them.
Thank you for going up there and representing us. Discussion of statements or policy level issues you all would like to address in future meetings? I have one. Dr. Jenkins, and this is a request just of staff to consider it, and it's come up multiple times before. It just strikes me, and I've asked this before, it may have already been done, but over the last couple of years, we just seem to be seeing a pattern of students who, by all accounts, have pretty good records and are pretty good students, getting in some serious, serious trouble. And the two common themes I see are theft of electronic devices and cell phones, and the other one is social media, threats and abuses made on social media. So I just want to put in a plug again. I would love it if our staff, and I don't know what staff it would be that would be in charge of this, whether it's media or whether it's disciplinary staff, or you, or Dr. Jar, or just whoever you designate, I really would like to see us put together a five-minute video for the beginning of every school year and a mandate that every high school show it that goes out. If we're not, and if we're already doing it, forgive me, I haven't heard that, you know, but goes out and shows kids, if you post this on Facebook, you will be expelled. If you steal a cellphone, you will be expelled. If you're an accomplice to the theft of a cellphone or electronic device, you will be expelled. And somehow, without using names, even give real old examples, because every time one of these cases comes before us, it just breaks my heart. And we only see the ones that come before us. Most of us on this board, if not all of us, I go through the matrix, and we're just seeing the tip of the iceberg with the people who challenge it. There are, I don't want to guess, but I would say scores of others that never challenge it, where kids are getting sent to Excel or expelled for those two offenses in particular.
I think you'd be pleased to hear, Chairman and board members, not only were we working on having that kind of video clip for our students, we're actually going to engage our students at the high schools in helping produce those small vignettes.
Vignettes.
I was going to say public service announcements, but because we think, and we've engaged some with Florida Hospital and some things that they did for their employees and even some military campaigns from one of their newest employees that shared it with us. Having the students engage in actually producing them so that it is peer-on-peer, saying, don't do this, here's how you get into trouble, and here are a couple of examples, that's our strategy going forward. But we took to heart when you requested that previously. I failed to mention, we're going to have our students produce some videos.
Just one suggestion on that, if you do produce something like that, and I don't even think I have to say this, but let's balance it out with why it's wrong, character education. Instead of just a punitive, this will happen. I think that's what you, and I know you do it anyway, but I just want to make sure that's the message.
Ms. Cadel.
Well, it's interesting you brought that up. I've got two things I want to talk about, but the one that you just brought up, in my conversations, this board never had a diversion program like, Think About It, is that the one for sexual harassment that we use? And we developed that with the community. And as we move, having more computers on campus, bring your own devices, I think we're just going to see more and more of this. So I would like us to look at some sort of diversion program that requires the parents to attend, because Back on Track and Think About It has a component that the parents have to come to, and there is a dialogue. And so if we had had some sort of whatever it is, that for a first-time offense, and it's kind of like, if you go on Back on Track in ninth grade, because say you brought alcohol to school in ninth grade, and then when you're in 12th grade, you come to an after-school event and you've been drinking and you get caught, you have no second chance. You know, we already put you in, we already put you in Back on Track. So the students need to know, we're giving you a one-time pass. But for that one-time pass, it's a six-week program or whatever. It can bring in the character and stuff. But I think as we, because we are seeing this where, and, you know, the attorney said that phone wasn't worth that much. Well, let me tell you something. Someone takes your iPhone and you're not at the end of your two-year contract, that sucker is expensive. You know, I think we've all been there. And it doesn't matter if it's an old phone, if you're at 18 months and they're not going to let you out of that contract, you're buying a new one at $499 or $599 or $399, but you're not buying it for $125 somewhere. So I think as we continue to look at, you know, as we continue to BYOD and all of that stuff, and it kind of ducktails on to, I had a conversation with Sheriff Demmings, and I think I shared it with you all, but we were getting ready to do a parade, and I made a comment to him about, it seemed like, you know, I'm not hearing so many murders and stuff overnight. He said, no, but you know what our biggest crime is right now? And I said, no, what? And he said, people stealing cell phones. And he said, if you're a woman and you're walking and you're talking on your cellphone, that's the worst thing you can do because people come right behind you and they take the cellphone. And I looked at him, because I'm not in law enforcement, and I said, well, are they taking it for the copper? Or, because, you know, it used to be they took the phones for the copper that was in it. He said, no, your phone is now a mini-computer. So they want all the data that is on that phone. So it is a, it is a huge law enforcement issue that cell phones are being stolen, you know, by people just standing on the side of the street and somebody coming and yanking it out of your hand. So I think we need to be proactive and really kind of look at that and see if we can't come up with a program. This isn't a policy issue thing, but we need to put, we need to put a couple of plugs in. Because we did highlight the social workers today. But we also, this is purchasing month, and we did a resolution for purchasing month. And we have worked really, really hard to make sure we are doing the very best that we can with procurement, and we're trying to make sure we're doing the best and we're winning awards for our financial practices and our procurement practices. So I feel like we also need to do a shout-out that it's purchasing month. And we also approved a resolution today for performing and visual arts. And that's this month also. If it were not for the voters of Orange County who gave us that one mill, we wouldn't be seeing the arts programs that we are. This is the time of year that we can all go to a school somewhere and see performing arts happening. And I had the opportunity to attend the southern region of whatever the big group of the a cappella groups are. And a group from Berkeley Prep in Hillsborough County came in first, Winter Park High School's Take Seven came in second. And it was just, it was very heartwarming to see different children expressing their creative, their creativity and their artistic, their music talents vocally. And so this is the time of year that all of the plays are going to start happening. This is the time of year that all of that stuff starts happening. And we need to remember to go out there and support what our students are doing. And our taxpayers have allowed us to keep the performing arts and the visual arts in our schools. And also, you know, we were sitting in there at the pre-agenda meeting, Wakava High School girls' basketball are state champions, Edgewater Girls state champions. Winter Park High School boys are in the semifinals on Friday night for the state championship. And it's my understanding that, is it Evans? The Evans boys are also in the semifinals. And they seem to think that maybe if Evans wins and Winter Park wins, the two of them will be playing for the state championship on Saturday night, and it's at 8:30 in Tampa. I mean, in Lakeland, 8:30 PM in Lakeland is what time the championship game is. So we also, the taxpayers of this county said extracurricular activities are important. And here is some of the fruit of the labor. We've got, you know, two girls' teams and two boys' teams that are going to the state finals. And so, you know, we need to, we need to celebrate that as well as all of our academic successes.
Thank you, Ms. Cadel. Ms. Flynn.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, last year, this board voted or approved the superintendent adding hours or days to the high school guidance counselors to work during the summer when they were putting the master schedules and putting the schedules together. And it's come to my attention that some of our large middle school guidance counselors might need that same help. So I wanted to put that out there to see if we could possibly add a few more days for our guidance counselors in our middle schools to help. And whether if that's a threshold that those schools have to meet with the student count, you know, I'm open to that. But, you know, I represent, and I think all of us do, some middle schools that are, you know, as large as some of our smaller high schools, and just wanted to bring that up.
Let me ask this. I keep a list of budget items for when the budget rolls around. So, Dr. Jenkins, I don't know how you want us to handle it, Ms. Flynn, but it seems to me we're coming up on budget season as it is in the next four months? Or is that not soon enough?
Couple of months.
No, I think if it's part of the budget considerations, I think that would be good. Of course, it would have to come before the summertime.
Right. Chairman, if I may?
Yes.
A couple of things come to mind. Let us bring back to the board an assessment of the need, because as you mentioned, some of our middle schools are much smaller. We're going to bring back to you a report both of how many of those days were used by the high schools, and then assess what we think the need might be at the middle school. We can bring you back some information so then it's a more informed decision rather than anecdotal requests from particulars.
Perfect. Thank you.
Can I ask a question on what you have a list? At some point, your list needs to get to the superintendent, because if my memory's correct, and sometimes it's not, we start talking in March about the capital budget. And I think in April, we start talking about the programmatic, so I think if we wait too long and we have to sidestep to figure it out, so my guess is sooner is better than later.
That's good advice. And I'll get it to her. It's right here on my iPhone.
And remember, you didn't use one of those when you first got elected. You thought we were crazy.
No, I had an iPhone when I got elected. I'm sorry. I may have misspoke, but I've had an iPhone for five years. All right. Speechless. I don't know. Where am I at? Who just spoke?
The end.
Ms. Flynn. Ms. Moore.
I, we also have a request particularly for maybe a work session on Title I funding. It's the one area that I get the most questions all the time. I would love a primer on how the money comes from Washington and what aspect and decision points we can make here locally. And then perhaps, as we have the superintendent of the year for data, perhaps it could be evaluated in terms of how the money is being spent and its effectiveness with student achievement. So that would be a session that would be of great service to me because I get questions on it all the time. Thank you.
Mr. Rhodes.
Would you add to the counselor information the number of counselors at middle schools and ratios involved there? I was a little surprised when I went to Walker, there was one counselor at the middle school. So I think it's probably good to know what the staffing is for counselors.
All right. Dr. Jenkins, anything good of the order? Mrs. Gordon, do you want to use your line? Mrs. Gordon pointed out to me that it's celebrating Black History Month and the still famous phrase, let my people go. So with that, we are adjourned.
Okay. Very funny.
I'm a student at Harvard.
MIT.
Caltech.
Columbia.
Our advantage, support at home, plus great teachers and programs at Orange County Public Schools. Check out what's available for your child.
There are magnet programs, advanced placement and honors classes, and guidance counselors who help us choose the right courses.
There are dual enrollment classes with Valencia College, so students can earn college credit while in high school.
OCPS has programs for every type of learner, pre-kindergarten through adult.
You won't believe what you can do through Orange County Public Schools.
For more information, visit the website at ocpss.net or call 407-317-3200.